Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June Eugene Water and Electric Board Meeting. My name is John Barofsky. I am the Vice Chair. Commissioner McCray, the President is joining us remotely this evening. And a few housekeeping things that we'll do before we start the meeting. First off is a facilities and safety awareness and the meeting logistics. So thank you for attending this evening. E-Web management and subject matter experts are presented in the room and virtually. The meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Please speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. We do have new audio and visual equipment this evening that we're testing out for the first time. So hopefully it will be working properly. If not, bear with us, please. Public testimony is welcome. Sign up forms are available at the back of the room. Visitor access is limited to the board meeting room and the restrooms. Restrooms are located on the first floor. Exit through the interior door at the back of the room, and a security officer will direct you to where the locations of guests, where the locations of the restrooms are. In the event of an emergency such as a fire or security incident, follow all instructions given by staff. And if an evacuation is required, please calmly proceed to the nearest safe exit as identified and directed by staff and evacuate away from the building to the farthest points in the parking lot to allow clear and immediate access for first responders. So with that being said, for those of you who are going to be doing public testimony tonight, we have the protocols up on the big screen there. If you could familiarize yourselves with that, that will be helpful. I'm going to gavel in the meeting and go to Agenda Item Number One, which is an agenda check. Do any of the commissioners have something that they would like to add or amend with the agenda? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on to Item Two, which is Items From The Board Members And General Manager.
Um, I earlier or last month, I took a tour of the College Hill Reservoir Site, and that was really interesting to go down underneath. It's all what was there, including the nuclear fallout shelter. Um, also, we had our Upriver Board Meeting, which commissioners attended, and then also our river trip, which I want to thank staff for all the hard work.
Great. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Um, three items. One, I'm on the OPEC Board. The Board is kind of there. I don't vote, but that's the most retirement benefits. And bottom line is, the fund is doing good. I think it's fourteen or fifteen million dollars that we have there. But it's the E-Web's contribution this year will be about two hundred and fifty thousand. And in, but the insurance costs are going to go up about fifteen percent for health insurance was the projection. So that's that. Bottom line is, it's doing well. Investments are doing well. I also attended the Lane Electric Co-ops Annual Meeting on Liaison for them and didn't hear much about the operations. I found out that fifty percent of their distribution lines are already underground. But Frank tells me that's about the same percentage that we have, about fifty percent. I was surprised to hear that eleven percent of their portfolio was that, which kind of surprised me because that's a lot more. I don't know how they get that because we get ours through. Those are just a couple of statistics that stood out to me. And then the third thing is, it's just, I'd like to comment, not taking a dig at staff, but I am volume of detailed information that we've gotten in the last forty eight hours probably surpasses any volume I've been sitting here for eighteen years that we've got. And I think it has to be fair to this board to give us enough time to digest it because it's very complex stuff. And, you know, involves legal opinions and all this other technical stuff. And so if we could just be aware of that because we do have lives and and all that stuff came in over the weekend. And then here it is Tuesday, and we've got this meeting, and we're supposed to understand and digest it and make decisions. And still be that, that we're. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, you know, thank staff also for the river trip and the College Hill Tour. I think that was really important, especially the College Hill tour. I appreciate that staff put that together. So I just wanted to echo.
Commissioner McCray?
Seems like only some of the mics are working.
We can't hear what you're saying.
Okay, so if commissioners, can, is this helpful? Can you hear me now? Okay, so try and have the microphone a little closer to you when you're speaking. Uh, I don't see Commissioner McCray on the line. So I'll just go ahead and go with mine. Pretty much everything has already been stated by the other commissioners, the the River Trip, the Upriver Meeting. Those things were all very well, and I wanted to thank staff for facilitating all of that stuff. So it was very good to be able to meet with some of our other Utility Board members as well as elected officials on the River Trip. So that was very nice. And whoever ordered that day, I really appreciate it, although I should have put on sunscreen. Frank?
Yeah, Commissioners, good evening. Just a couple of items. First of all, Commissioner Brown certainly agree with the amount of volume and the time. That the is the exception to the rule as far as its timeliness, and and we'll make sure to correct that. The comment around the eleven percent nuclear is likely because that comes through Bonneville and Lane Electric. A larger percentage of their portfolio is fulfilled by Bonneville. So that would be, that would account for the differences between our percentage and Lane Electric percentage of nuclear. I had one item this evening for Commissioners. Just wanted to uphold the Commissioners regarding a particular letter that we received on May twenty-third from an individual regarding the potential proposal or sale of the Lieberg Hydroelectric Facility. It's something that we could evaluate. I'll make a couple of of notes about that. First of all, as a FERC regulated facility, there would be substantial regulatory requirements and processes associated with any transfer of ownership. As we do, if if the Board does provide some endorsement to evaluate certain proposals, we would do so in the context of the original principles associated with our record decision. One example being to eliminate long-term risk, for example. Just wanted to highlight that we did receive that. Commissioners also received that letter and get some kind of endorsement from the Board. And it could be head nods would be appropriate if the Board would like us to do some high-level evaluation of proposals to that we received regarding the Lieberg Project.
Would you like that at this point, or do you want us to do that later on?
I'd like it now if I can get it.
Commissioner Brown?
I think it wouldn't be of good use of staff's time. I mean, if it doesn't work for us, how is it going to work for a venture capital corporation? And they're still going to have the stormwater management obligation to the community. And whether or not that could be, I mean, if they defaulted, then who's going to take care of the stormwater? And that's a multimillion dollar obligation. For me, I, you know, I think we've done the math. It doesn't work. Regulations are there, and so I think it would be, I mean, you guys have enough to do. I would not be in favor considering it.
And I could go either way. So it looks like we've got three for now. So that's a no.
No, thank you, Commissioners.
Um, I did get a text from Commissioner McCray that he didn't have nothing to add under Items From Board Members Other Than To Echo the sentiments that were already said. At this point, I'm going to and we have a couple of people that have scheduled sign up to call. And usually we stop taking call-ins or stop taking applications for public testimony once the meeting has started. I told her we'd give her a few more minutes. Have we gotten any confirmation from the two that have called?
He's on the line, but I have not heard from the other individual.
Okay, so we'll go with Ms. King, and then the person who didn't call in at that time, we'll just skip over her. The next item on the agenda is the City of Eugene's potential fee. We've got City Manager Sarah Madari and staff.
Before I go, right?
No, you can come up to the front. We put you in the big stage.
Sorry for the bad directions.
I told me I just said.
Although it would be nice to have you standing in the public testimony chair. Switch roles, switch roles, Brown.
I'm going to speak on your budget. All right.
That one, it's picking you up. You're okay.
Okay. Now it's definitely picking me up. Well, thank you so much for having us this evening. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate being brought up to the front of the agenda. I know you have a long night ahead of you. We recognize we had twenty minutes tonight, so we're definitely not going to give you a presentation. Instead, just walk you through some high points. Again, I'm Sarah Madari, City Manager, and I'm joined by our Chief Financial Officer Twyla Miller and our Assistant City Manager Matt Rodriguez, who also oversees public works and planning and development. So does a lot of work with E-Web. Um, I think most of you know and have probably been reading about some of the financial challenges that the city's been working through over the last, well, actually, probably like the last ten years or maybe entire, my entire career, which is twenty-eight years. And I'll speak to that at the very end. But more importantly, as part of this biennial budget that was adopted last year, we included over twenty million dollars worth of ongoing reductions or reductions, uh, an additional five million dollars that we repurposed. So we took things that we were doing, and we repurposed those funds to do other things to meet some of the urgent community needs. And even with that, we still had an eight million dollar revenue plug that needed to be filled in the biennium. So as part of that, we we've been exploring new revenues. I invited a revenue team, so a group of community members to include Commissioner Barofsky to help us like to really learn a little bit deeper about what's going on with the city's budget, how we got here, and to evaluate a a number of revenue sources that a staff team put together over the summer. So we we met a number of times, walked through that, and they gave me some advice on what are the best potential things that make the most sense for for the short-term gap? And also some discussion about longer-term issues and things that people want to see a lot more of, including housing, which was a high priority for for most. So as you likely know, it's not that easy to generate eight million dollars of revenue in a single year. So the supplemental budget that council will have a public hearing about and take action on June twenty-fourth includes a mix of things to hit that eight million dollars. Most of it is reductions. So there's about probably six, six and a half million dollars worth of either one-time savings or ongoing savings or some one-time revenue options. And then there's one new revenue source that were, is one of the items I want to talk to you about tonight. And that is a million dollars that we're proposing and an increase in stormwater fees. And the way we would do that, and I think you've probably read about this, is expanding the definition of what's eligible. So right now, we pay for a number of our parks' activities that are stormwater functioning activities. This is a discussion about expanding that definition to include more of our park operations, and that generates about a million dollars. That's what we're proposing. So that would, that would land on the bill and about for a average home, probably eighty cents to a dollar a month. So that's Item One, and that's actually the smaller of the two. But that would allow us to get through this, this, the rest of this biennial without taking deeper cuts. And there's quite a few that are already built into the supplemental budget. The larger of the new revenue sources is consideration of a new fee for fire service and fire stabilization. This is something that actually needs quite a bit more work, but it would generate and would need to generate quite a bit more money. So it, I think we're looking at approximately a ten million dollar proposal that would allow us to stabilize that service, stabilize the general fund, and also have some increases in some of the services we provide to the community. So that one, as I said, needs more work. It's it's definitely more significant, but the council has said, yes, we're we're open to it. So anytime we start talking about fees, the first question usually that comes up is, is E-Web going to bill for that? And the reason why I think people bring that up locally is because almost every other city in Oregon that has any other fees for parks, fire, and police, which is many cities, also do their own utilities and bill that bill through their utility system. We're pretty unique in that we're separated. And so that's, I think that's why the question comes up, and it's why we tend to look because we already have that relationship. We've been really clear with council that that would need a lot more work, that I know that this has been a tense conversation in the past. We haven't built any assumptions into this. And so some of the things that we're exploring are, you know, what would it look like if we build in-house for this? What would it look like if we also contracted for service with a vendor? And we we had an RFP or an RFQ or an RF, one of those RFs to explore that possibility? And of course, one of the possibilities would be, could we reach an agreement potentially with E-Web if this proposal was to go forward? So that is, because I know there's going to be a lot of conversation in the community, we, I wanted the opportunity to be able to come and talk to you, let you know that the the stormwater piece is sooner, should have pretty minor significant, a pretty minor impact operationally on on E-Web staff. It could involve a second rate increase, so there is an impact. I can't say it's zero impact. The public hearing for that is on June tenth, so it is kind of right around the corner with June seventeenth. It's a wide corner, a wider corner, and potential action on the twenty-fourth of June. Um, and again, the fire, we're going to work on through the fall, through the summer and and probably bring a proposal to the council in the fall. So in the, uh, one of the fun facts that I presented at council, if you watched that, was going back and trying to understand how we got here. And I got hired in nineteen ninety-six by the city as a Parks employee right after the property measures had passed and and we were freezing positions and making reductions. And I think that was sort of the beginning of it. And in my research of that, discovered that in nineteen ninety-six, we had, I might get the point six and point four mixed up, but nine, eleven point six. We had eleven point six FTE in Eugene per thousand community members, and today we have nine point four. And in that same amount of time, we've grown fifty-four thousand people. So we essentially have absorbed the entire population of Springfield, and we're doing that with two hundred and eighty-five less people than we would have if we kept that same ratio going forward. So it's been a long series of reductions. Your observation about increases going up, health increases going up at fifteen percent when we're have some kind of locks on what our property taxes can grow at, make it very challenging. And so we also know it's very challenging for the community. So we wanted to just give you a chance to talk and ask questions. And if you would like a deeper presentation and more information, we're happy to come back at any time. I think that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you very much. And I've got a real strong passion about this because I know we can't do anything about stormwater. That's in the charter, and you're going to do it no matter what. But um, next year, it's thirteen million. This year, it's eight million, and next year, it's thirteen million.
It grows to that.
So to the microphone. Into the microphone?
Excuse me, I'm doing the best, okay? Thank you. So um, um, I can't get it much closer, I'm sorry. But so that now it's eight million, but it's thirteen next year. So and you already have baked into your five-year CIP five point some odd percent per year compounded on stormwater. Yeah, I've looked at the budget. And my concern is, is that it's an E-Web bill. And two of the four charges on E-Web bills have nothing to do with E-Web, but it's always tagged onto E-Web. And I have a real problem telling a single mother with two kids, we're going to shut your power and water off because you can't pay this bill. And this is debt by a thousand cuts to me. I I would be totally for doing a separate billing. I would absolutely help champion that, but to separate water and electricity, which we have input on and control on, and then separate the other two, stormwater and MWMC, I'm good with that. And then if you want to add a fire fee, and then we don't have to worry about the charter and everything else, I would support that. But I would have a real problem with with shutting people's power off because they can't pay this bill that now has fire and and parks operations in it. And so that's kind of my high-level response, and you can talk me out of it. But right now, I would be challenged to to want to approve a fire fee because I know that probably not much you can do about stormwater.
Yeah, I'm not interested in talking you out of it. So I think we we share some of your concerns, and that's why I've said we're we're pretty open to exploring how, what is the best way to do this that works for for all?
Yeah, and also I I look at, you know, like 4G, their tax exempt, but they say they pay more in stormwater fees than you do in electricity. And and you look at the tax exempt entities, and now we're going to bill them for a fire fee, which do they, are they really obligated to pay it or not? And I look at the rental community, they're already paying for parks in their rent through their property taxes and their and their fire. And so it's, to me, it's double debt. So there's, yeah, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes and try to figure this out. But I can see where there can, there can be some pushback on it. But I also need to understand your need for the money, and you've done some pretty brutal cuts already. So I thank you, and I'll support you if I can in in something that would not adversely impact our our rate pairs. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson?
I I agree on the not turning power off piece. I disagree and and would not like to do separate billing if at all possible. I know that that's controversial, but I think since we did a lot of work around updating our bill and what the bill itself looks like, I haven't had very many constituents come to me with, like, they understand where that's coming from, so they have questions about it. They think more go to the city because it's spelled out a little bit better. But I don't want us to just for inconvenience sake, or, you know, how it looks sake, have an additional cost because it would be, you know, a whole different system that would have to be paid for, and that would be a bigger burden. And thus, we would get, you know, lower impact on the amount of money spent. So as much as I don't want to put another thing on our bill, if that has to be done, I would rather that we do it so we get more of our, you know, community dollars where they need to go to support the other programs. I I agree with what Sonya said.
I got a text from Matt. He said, thanks for the presentation. He didn't have any questions at this time. Thanks for coming and presenting. Like, like Sarah said, I sat on the Revenue Committee. We've flushed through a lot of things, and I did bring up a lot of the concerns that I've heard at this board and in this boardroom as far as the challenges to some of our customers have with with our billing. And so just know that that was voiced in in the room, and it was heard very well by by staff. One of the questions that I would have, and I don't know if you can get back to me on this or back to us, but the memo is on the stormwater fees, you know, you mentioned the impact to a single-family home. You know, it's going to be this this much. I'm wondering if you could also kind of give us what it's going to do to the business community, to some of the larger, the larger stormwater pay rate payers, such as as Commissioner Brown alluded to 4G, you know, Valley River, yeah, some of these large commercial and even small commercial, you know, what what the average impact is going to be on those? Because it's easy to say, oh, this is going to be forty forty cents on the average homeowner. But, you know, if you've got a lot of infirmity services, it's it's exponentially larger. So that would be something that would be helpful for me so that I could explain it to to my constituents.
Yes, thank you. I don't have a question for city staff at the moment. I did want to get a little bit of clarification from Commissioner Carlson and Schlossberg around the the issue of the billing cost. Presently, the city does pay for E-Web's marginal cost to do the billing. But what I'm understanding from your feedback is that separate bills would be less efficient, and you're concerned with the efficiency of having two bills versus one. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
From a community perspective specifically, right? I mean, obviously, it's it's more work for us in some regards. But I'm guessing that and having a completely separate bill system for the entire community, that would be more costly than running it through the system we already have in place. I I mean, I could be wrong, but.
In aggregate, I think you're correct.
And and then also getting back to that, you know, one of the things that was brought up was and I'm again, cart for the horse here. When we're talking about billing for a fee, that there still needs to be a lot of work done on the the way it's put together is it was brought up by B and by other people in the Revenue Committee and at City Council. There would have to be some sort of of fee assistance for low-income people that would be baked into that. I think that was one of the things that we stressed as well. So whether, how that comes out, this is kind of what Sarah alluded to in as far as that there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the second step of this. That's why I'm kind of concentrating on the stormwater fee, which were, which were obligated to do by city charter. Commissioner Brown?
So can you maybe help me with this? So let's just take the University of Oregon, for example. They don't pay a penny for its fire protection right now. So would this take over that? And now they're going to start paying into our fire department for the protection that they get?
Yeah, again, this is, this is determining how it gets billed and who who's the owner. But we anticipate that University of Oregon would pay the fee, at least in our early discussions, that as we look through like different scenarios, I think again, we could be happy to come back and talk to you about what we're learning.
Love to talk. Thank you.
And and this is a model that is being used by several other communities throughout the state. It's not like we're inventing it. I mean, you could probably speak to that.
Yeah, and and actually, Matt might be able to too. I just wasn't sure how many slides we could get through in twenty minutes and a conversation. But yeah. Do you recall the cities? They just talked, yeah.
So just a few, I remember offhand. So Medford, Corvallis, Grants Pass is considering it. They haven't put it in place. Jacksonville. There's three or four more that that have a fee that includes fire service in it. And in Corvallis, just kind of responding to your question about U of O, that OSU does pay that fee to Corvallis as an example.
That would be an economic boon for the fire department if they're not paying up.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that I I don't have a problem if the city decided that they were, you wanted to do your own billing, that would be fine. But I guess if it's, if it's cheap, if it costs less money and you can use the money in a better way for us doing the billing, I I I'm fine with that. And I know we just went to a whole bill redesign. But if we did start adding significant fees, I think that we would need to add something to the bill and make it clear, even the return address, maybe wouldn't just be E-Web, but E-Web and the City of Eugene or something like that.
Yeah. You said you had no comments. Did you want to chime in? Hearing none. Well, thank you for coming and presenting. I've heard the text, what he says. Nothing from him. Thank you. He's had, he's in an area that has very weak signals, so that's why he's doing it to that.
Yeah, Commissioners, I just wanted to to make make it clear that the city's going through this process, and and our intent is to work with the city around any kind of details that they they might need to support their options at this case, at this time. So as they work through their process, they'll be continually reaching out to to us, and we'll support them in their evaluation and what the options might look at so that there would be more details coming forward to this board at some point regarding the path forward. If if the board's good with that, that's our approach at this point.
Great. And I just want to say that from everything I've heard from staff on both ends, the relationship between staff of E-Web and the staff, city staff, is probably at one of its all-time bests as far as working together, not just on billing processes, but shovels in the ground and tearing up our streets downtown, Commissioner Brown. But we will do our best to make sure it moves forward. Anything else from you guys?
No, I'm just super appreciative to be here, and we look forward to hosting you on June twenty-fourth.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is our public input. I will read the preamble. Welcome to the public input session for this meeting. This portion of the agenda is dedicated to providing community members an opportunity to address the board. This portion of the agenda is dedicated to providing community members an opportunity to address the board about any E web topic or issue. We respect all speakers and here we respectfully request all speakers adhere to E web's public input instructions and code of conduct that are provided during the signup sheet. That's going to be these things up here. Uh, when your name is called, you will have three minutes to provide your comments. The public input session is now open. We will begin with the following, and we're going to start with our people who are on the phone first. So that will be Kathy King. Kathy, are you with us? If so, unmute yourself and you will have three minutes.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um Kathy Gang Amazon, a segue to comments for the sixth time this year. I quote Regis de Garde today about rain mitigating Vanita Fire. Crews will be working on mop up ops to make sure all hotspots from fire completely out. An analogy to E web rep at smart meter installation company telling a smart telling a rate payer that after most digital meters installed, they will send out the mop up crews for the resistors. Oh, yes, those of us who it turns out as history may prove that it may be smarter and healthier for refusing not so smart meters. We will not be extinguished like fire embers because nationwide resistance to smart meters is growing like two bills in New York Legislature. Mister Lawson and Board, you would have been wiser with fewer legal headaches and rate payers more satisfied, better served. If you had treated customers more equity equitably, especially E H S sufferers who entreated you to withdraw your draconian policy to require universal smart meters. Fifty percent of the utilities do allow true opt out, including EPUD. To keep the safe, healthy, conserving analog meters that E E web rate payers thought was our legacy policy, no digital meter. Tragic flaws and E web's attempt to mandate a hundred percent compliance have emerged. Instead of from initial launch when E web failed in two thousand thirteen to set up any, let alone an ongoing citizen advisory committee recommended in your funded good company refu- report. You instead not only ignored that sage counsel, but also reversed the two thousand and thirteen board decision that emphasized even if one had opted in for a digital, one could have analog reinstalled. Besides ignoring rate payers and elected steward predecessors, in the ice storm of twenty four, you authorized tactics to threaten rate payers capriciously turning off electricity of several senior women the day after stunning testimony by nine smart meter opponents, including a lawyer on May seventh. One partially disabled woman was able to get to the door and was not able to get to the door before the electricity was turned off with no warning. Only one knock and nobody shouting, I am an E web rep or your electricity will be turned off now. Another had medicine requiring refrigeration. One woman had severe health issues, one still has no electricity after two weeks. Ruthless and tactics and policy divergence, you missed a win win opportunity. I invited you to enable, allowing E web to retain its former more or less positive reputation by meeting with concerned rate payers that could have resulted in positive outcomes. Instead of the legal morass in which you now find yourself wasting our money on legal fees and tech that is not required on every house to allow a time of day pricing, which itself is a policy that works against working class families that you serve. There is still time.
Thank you Kathy, your time is expired.
Town hall meetings, please, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sabrina Siegel. Sabrina, are you with us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you, go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, uh, I I just want to say um I'm a plaintiff in this suit against E web. And nobody wants to sue E web and we're all a community together. My children went to school with your children and uh this isn't the way community treats community. Um, anyway, but uh you leave us no choice. We begged for months and educated you for years. And um, some of us absolutely cannot have a smart meter on our home. I I'm electro sensitive, highly electro sensitive, and I'm doing my best uh to even survive living in town, just being in my home where I am actually tortured when my neighbor accidentally puts on his Bluetooth. Um, he's so kind to keep it off for me most of the time. Um, uh, but some, when his computer updates, it comes on and then he quickly turns it off when he realizes it. Or I call him because I'm suffering. Um, and I'm suffering. Uh, I I I get brain fog and my heart hurts and I can't breathe well. And I'm feeling pains when your your information is shooting through my kitchen and my bathroom. I could feel the transmissions of the other smart meters in the neighborhood. And I don't even think my neighbors have the smart meters yet. Um, so they're shooting through my home from the neighborhood and I could feel them very strong. My kidneys hurt, I could barely do the dishes at my sink, my my kidneys, my heart and my head. Um, so I'm just doing the best that I can just to survive in my home. My son goes to school and this is my life, I have to be in my home and I do love my home. But um, then you want to add insult to injury and insist to put a smart meter on my home. And I cannot have the dirty electricity, the additional assault basically on my body. Um, when I'm just barely getting by as it is in my home and uh have the RF, you know, possibly leaking through and you say that you can't put in writing that we can have an opt out forever. You know, you you can't commit to that. You say perhaps next month in the new board will vote to not allow opt outs anymore of your um opting out on the smart meter to have the non transmitting mode.
Thank you Kathy, your time is up. Yeah, Sabrina. I'm sorry, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Thank you Sabrina.
Thank you.
Next up is Curtis Blankenship.
Yeah, I'm Curtis Blankenship, Springfield, Oregon. Uh, I paid taxes here since nineteen eighty five in Lake County. Uh, there was a recent article uh just two days ago by NPR talking about um Farmington, Massachusetts now has a networked geothermal heat pump system. And it's the first one that they have independent ones that are owned by the users. But this is the first one that is done by a utility board, a networked geothermal heat pump system. And uh, your integrated resources plan has nuclear power in it that you're going to hook up to uh Bonneville or you already hooked up to Bonneville and they're going to probably hook up to uh a out of state nuclear power. So this is a win win for you guys because uh it's run by electricity, not gas. And um, so with cogeneration and uh winter, there's all kinds of winter storage schemes. You could easily keep us off of nuclear power. And uh, the U of O could easily put one of these in for their uh heat heating plan upgrade. And um, you know, it'd be a chance for them to teach students about cyclical uh alternative technical technology systems that are more cyclical instead of linear. And uh, change, you know, we're going to have to rethink the way we do energy in this country. Uh, if we're going to uh fight climate change and stay off of nuclear. So um, I'm hoping you would do uh. So and there's lower, you know, there's lower load requirements because uh it's much more efficient to run, they're pulling, uh, you know, I'm sure you guys know how this works. It goes through the earth, it takes the uh cool and temperature from the earth and adds to it and subtracts to it to cool you, it works to cool your houses also. So uh, I hope you've done due diligence and studied, I'd like to ask, have you studied uh network geothermal heat pumps? And would you please do due diligence and study these to keep us off of nuclear power? Because you're going to run into a lot of opposition for nuclear power. And uh, please uh do much more new uh rooftop solar, I'd like to see much more rooftop solar. Uh, again, to keep us off nu- uh, uh, nuclear power and you know, the U of O, you're going to have to rethink about how these buildings are, they're going to have to be much more uh oriented to the south with greenhouses on for uh if we're going to go into the future with uh and lower climate change and fight climate change. All right, so yeah, please do due diligence and check on uh network geothermal thermal heat pump systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Carlswor.
Charles.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, um, I'm going to try and cover a lot of ground in a little bit of time. My name's Sarah and happy to be here tonight, it's kind of a surprise because I work a lot and I don't usually have time to come to meetings like this. And I didn't know this meeting was happening until I got the newsletter from E web last night. And there was an announcement in the newsletter, but I got that kind of at the eleventh hour, literally like eleven P M when I was kind of on my way to slumber. And uh, when I clicked on the link for the agenda and the supporting materials, that link actually leads to the January twenty ninth agenda. So, oh, I went to bed and I woke up this morning and I figured that there would probably be an announcement about a public meeting, public board meeting, like on the Facebook page, but there wasn't. And so I was like, huh, I'm going to guess call E web to find out when and where this meeting that they announced in the newsletter is. And when I got to your website to get your phone numbers, where I finally saw an announcement that had a link to the actual coordinates of this meeting. And then I clicked on that link and there was, uh, as Commissioner Brown mentioned, a compendium of uh supporting materials that I have had zero time to review. So if I wanted to provide any like technical relevant, any relevant commentary on the technical aspects of this very complex capital improvement plan, ten year plan, super important, public utility, public comments, public awareness, that's thirty seconds. Okay, um. Second, I wanted to note that I've never been here before. And I got here a little bit early because I thought I could at least observe if not uh participate in the first part of the meeting. But I couldn't, so I took a walk around the facility and it's really beautiful. I really like what you've done with the sustainability design, the environmental designs and uh whatnot. Like it's that, those are the things we were talking about in public policy classes twenty years ago. And it's really nice to actually see it in fruition. I'm curious, I'm kind of bummed that Sarah is not still here because I was wondering if the city or Angler County is requiring um uh new development and redevelopment to incorporate some of these, not some, but all of these uh environmental design, like progressive things that you've got going on here. Beautiful. Um. Let's see, there's a couple of things that came up, so I am, I only have twenty seconds left. Oh shit, okay, impervious surfaces, uh, it's stormwater. Why are we charging people for stormwater when impervious surfaces are actually the cause of stormwater? One of the things about this uh facility is it's got that grid work for the ground. You're going to decrease your, oh, I have more things. I'm on the advisory committee for the planning commission from Northwest Eugene um processing right now, how we're going to roll out the planning initiative. We've been having a really hard time finding civic space to have those meetings in. And I'm wondering if you could consider opening up your conference room so that we could schedule those meetings through the city um to have them here.
Thank you for the comment. Next is Ian Patz. Followed by Adrian Bassett.
Hey. I'm here to talk about these smart meters. My fifty year old brother died died of electromagnetic illness. I talked to three surgeons, independent doctors. And they all told me the same thing. I find it really apprehensible that you're shutting this down our throat. These are our private homes, we should have a right to choose what we have on our property. And when this deal was made, there was so much opposition, so much that the compromise was made that we would never be forced to have one. And you agreed, E web agreed, that we had to opt in to get one. And then you secretly changed that, getting us in the back door, you have to opt out not to have one. Now you're thuggishly, thuggishly shutting them down our throats. Without any of our choice. When does this entity, E web, start listening to the public and stop acting like a bunch of primadonnas that are just after empire building, more revenue? This thing has, it's not about saving us money, it's about giving you more income. When do we get a voice? You, all you people write these beautiful eloquent things about why you want to run for commissioner on the board in these older pamphlets, beautifully poetic. When you turn your back and starts kicking us in the pants, because you've all done it. I don't understand, this is a epidemic problem with this E web. You've never listened to us, you do what you want, you you do this kind of thing where we think we're talking to a wall and then you just do whatever you want. And now you're bringing something that is truly unhealthy into our private homes. We should have the right to choose about our own property and you should honor your agreement that you made. Instead of playing this game of intimidation and bullying. And maybe if you were more transparent and you supported us more and you gave us a little bit more idea that you looked out for our interests, you wouldn't need guards at the door. But you make secret contracts with private companies that pay out millions of dollars a year and that you won't let us know the details of, you know, the Jones Wood Paper Mill Energy Building thing. We fought like hip, but you found someone to rubber stamp that and tell us that we didn't have a right to know the details, even though it costs us millions of dollars a year. You won't include us in the process, you just act like a bunch of arrogant spoiled brats. And I mean it, this is our private home, we should have a right to choose what we have on our property and you should not be in our backyard.
Thank you. Adrian Bassett is next. Oh, Bethany Con.
The sheriff's manager, Steph, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Aiden Bassett, I live in Ward one, twenty five years old. I'm a third year law student and I'm here to talk to you about the Carmen Smith project. I was born in Eugene in nineteen ninety eight and a year later, E web began Endangered Species Act consultation for its license renewal to evaluate the effects of continued operation of the Carmen Smith project. Since Upper Willamette River Chinook and Wolf Sound illicit is threatened under the ESA that same year. When I was in fourth grade, E web filed a settlement agreement with uh FERC in which E web agreed to construct new state of the art volitional fish passage measures to allow fish access to miles of river above the Carmen Smith project. When I was a senior in high school, you have insisted volitional passage made the project uneconomic and reached a new settlement agreement with FERC to implement the inferior alternative of trap and haul facilities. Sixteen years after E web first agreed to enable volitional passage, Carmen Smith has effectively no fish passage infrastructure of any kind. And the damage has been profound. In twenty sixteen, NOAA Fisheries published an ESA status review for Upper Willamette River Chinook, stating that the Mackenzie River subpopulation, once seen as a stronghold for this threatened species, has been in decline over the prior ten years. In other words, in the eight years since then, E web has had even more reason to know that it's near total failure to comply with the fish passage terms of its FERC license has been directly furthering the risk that these salmon will go extinct. This is an astonishing level of delay. E web's current projections of completion of trap and haul facilities near the end of this decade, totally unacceptable. Two hundred million dollars is available through the bipartisan infrastructure law for upgrades to dam that allow for fish passage to allow for fish passage. that allow for fish passage to allow for fish passage. And the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has awarded more than $30 million in Oregon alone. I struggle to believe that EWEB cannot afford volitional fish passage with so much federal funding now available, just as one example. Feels like EWEB has spent most of my life skipping between excuses not to construct volitional fish passage, fish passage facilities or in fact, any fish passage facilities at all. But no dubious risk of sinkholes nor incorrect estimate of future power prices justifies further threatening a species on the brink. It's long past time for EWEB to implement the volitional fish passage measures it first agreed to back in 2008. EWEB needs to direct staff to provide cost estimates for fish passage that consider EWEB's current legal and financial viability and the potential to receive federal or state funds to ensure fish passage. Time for the excuses to end.
Thank you. Bethany Cotton, followed by Josh Corn.
Good evening, commissioners, manager and staff. I'm Bethany Cotton, EWEB ratepayer, resident of Ward 7 and conservation director for Eugene-based Cascadia Wildlands, an original party to the settlement process. As a conservationist, recreationist, ratepayer and environmental lawyer with focus on wildlife law, I'm deeply concerned with EWEB's long-term delays in complying with fish passage requirements at Carmen Smith. I was heartened to see an update on tonight's agenda, but find what was provided in writing inadequate. The update repeats earlier excuses and states EWEB's intent to not achieve fish passage for an additional five to seven years. The update fails to disclose the potential substantial financial and legal liabilities FERC notified EWEB of in its April letter and omission that is hard to fathom as you conduct a cost-benefit analysis. The update also fails to explain if EWEB has actively engaged in the re-initiated Endangered Species Act consultation with National Marine Fisheries Service and the Fish and Wildlife Service in the months since their letters. That EWEB seems so willing to be in multi-year violation of your license and federal laws is a serious dereliction. It's the kind of behavior I might expect from a bad actor for-profit corporation, but not from a public utility whose stated mission is to enhance our community's vitality by delivering drinking water and electric services consistent with the values of our customer owners and to do so while being a local utility that inspires our customers to invest in and rely on us. Extinction is not a value of this community. Failure to comply with our nation's foundational environmental laws is not a value of this community, nor does it inspire community investment or reliance. I want to emphasize how serious the letters from the three federal agencies are. In 16 years of public interest environmental law practice, I cannot recall seeing letters from an agency, let alone all relevant agencies so strongly worded and stark in their assessment of a partner's failures to meet their obligations. As staff noted in the written update, NIPS accused you of bad faith. It's not done lightly. You have missed the window for trap and haul to be a remotely viable alternative. Of course, anticipated expenses have increased as you have delayed year after year. That increase in costs cannot justify further delay. EWEB is contributing to the extinction of two iconic Northwest species, Chinook salmon and bull trap. I urge you to actively participate in ESA consultation this summer with NIPS and Fish and Wildlife Service, adequately stack the project, honestly assess costs and benefits, including the immeasurable cost of extinction and a significant federal power act fine liability and meet your decades-long fish passage commitments via volitional passage or dam removal. Thank you.
Asher Corn, followed by our last speaker, Ellen Orwin-Zahn.
I, I've been speaking out against the smart meter program since the beginning in 2013. And I appreciate the ability to be able to speak out in these meetings and assert my rights of opposition in these public forums. What I don't appreciate is retaliation from your organization or my, my ability to speak out and assert my rights. And that, and I, I also don't appreciate somehow that this board has no oversight from any other authority in this state. Apparently. So that's fairly odd. But that, in the last month since the previous meeting, you guys shut my power off. Because I've been asserting my rights to decline a smart meter being being attached to my home as, as I have since 2013. And, and since then, I've been extorted for $250, which I paid. And now you guys have a transmitting meter on my home, an act of retaliation. Because I know of at least two other individuals who have also been extorted for $250 for refusing a smart meter and have, have paid the $250 extortion fee and have a non-transmitting meter. So is this an equitable policy that you're retaliating for some reason against me? Because I'm outspoken on this issue for so long and probably others. I'm not saying I'm, I'm the only one that's being retaliated against, but you guys are well aware that there's legal proceedings ongoing on this issue, yet you're still gonna retaliate against me and others and force us to have a transmitting meter when we were clearly opted out from the beginning? I, it doesn't sound like an equitable policy to me. And you, you guys are really not looking so good in terms of the legal proceedings that are ongoing. So, you know, turn off my meter. There's no reason to force a, force me to be up all night because I can't sleep with this microwave transmitting meter on my home that's spying on me and, and causing me to not be able to sleep. So please turn off my meter.
Thanks. Our last one is Alan Alfredo Ormanzado.
Well, hi again. And forgive me for being late, but I had to work extra because somebody's gotta pay all these added fees and all these crazy things so that we can pay for the smart meter program that we really don't want. And we have to pay for your lawyer fees. And so on my bill, I've got service charge, I've got electricity delivery charge, plus the actual charges for what I'm using. All I should be getting charged for is what I'm using. That's how it used to be with EWEB. I don't appreciate having to pay for these programs that most of us don't want. Almost everyone I've spoken to in Eugene does not want a smart meter. They're not willing as, as we are to speak up, but they don't want them. I've only met maybe two or three people out of everyone I've spoken to that's in favor of smart meters. That's about it. Everyone else, no, no, no. You know, so you're making, you're also adding another layer of vulnerability to the system because yes, they can be hacked into. Yes, thank you. The system can be taken down through hacking. And if we're ever, I mean, I know you guys have had meetings about what happens if this facility gets attacked. Well, who's gonna attack it? It ain't gonna be us because we're not the crazy militia types. But what if it's another country? The first thing they're gonna do is electromagnetic, electromagnetic pulse bomb up in the atmosphere, which will knock out the whole system. So once you get the system going, you're still gonna have to go out and replace every single one of those smart meters that got knocked out by that electromagnetic pulse. You wouldn't have to do that with the analog meters. We don't want that. We know that even if we opt for the no transmitting option, now we know that eventually you're gonna force us to have those meters broadcasting. We know that. We see how you're operating. And we had the opt-out earlier about, yes, you can keep your analog meters. Opt-out, great. All of a sudden, no, you can't have it, but we'll give you this other option. And it still messes with the electricity coming in the house. It still adds extra microwaves into the house. And what we hear is it can start fires, it can melt old wiring. I have old wiring in my house. It's an old house. You know, so we know that the next step is gonna be you're gonna force us to have them broadcast. Be honest with people. Be honest with us. Be caring. Some of you, you look like you're concerned when we're speaking, but we see the lack of concern in your actual responses and in your actual policies. So please make a change. Listen to the human part of yourself. Listen to your hearts. Listen to our hearts, please. We really need that kind of connection with you guys. And that's, I got 14 seconds, so thank you very much. And I'll be seeing you next month.
Thank you.
Where's the, where's the mic for public comment?
This is, we are just installing these, this is just started up today, so we're working on audiovisual technology. So bear with us on that matter, but there are speakers in the, in the room, so it's all being broadcast. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and providing testimony. At this point, I will ask if there's any comments from commissioners or staff at this point. Commissioner McCray texted me that he has no comments. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to our next action item, which is the approval of consent calendar A.
I'll move to adopt consent calendar A.
It's moved by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Carlson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'm in. We have four ayes. That, that's enough. We'll move on to approval of consent calendar B. Mr. Brown.
I'd like to pull item five and consent calendar B.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve that calendar B? That's number five.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Matt. Item number five. Go ahead, John.
So yeah, thank you. And I would like to thank staff for the response from my employees. So for the people that don't see what we're talking about, it's a $1.7 million contract, rebuild a campground in part of the Carmen relicensing, but I'm concerned about the discrepancies. We, we thought it was 900 and some odd thousand dollars in the 2024 budget. The engineer said 3 million and this comes in at 1.7. And so along with my thing about the things keep, which, you know, when do we believe what it is? We've, we've got an engineer's estimate of 3 million. We have a budget item 970 and we have an agenda item of 1.7. And this is for a campground. So why such the deviation in a campground?
So Commissioner Brown, Karen Kelly, chief operations officer for the record. There was an estimate done that was based on a prior campground project back in 2021. That's what you see for the budget. That scope changed over time. The new engineer's estimate came in after budgeting cycle for 2024. So we're in budget cycle right now for 2025, hence the, hence the difference. So that engineer's estimate at 3 million had changed based on time and inflation and also on change of scope. So that's the, the basics, but if you want more, I'm gonna punt over to Lisa who can answer additional questions.
Well, my concern is, is had, and we just waited a few months, we'd, we'd be adopting a $3 million item instead of 1.7. And we've got so much pressure on upward rates. Rates are gonna go up so much, it's pathetic. And then we keep, we keep doing this little by little by little. And I just want to emphasize cost control and, and frugality because this is a commodity that people don't have a choice on and it's necessary to live with. And so as we continue to go this trend, I know rates are gonna go up quite a bit in the next few years. Things that are out of our control, but the things are in our control. It's certainly like to, not saying you're not trying, but I'm gonna push a little bit harder to try a little bit harder to keep cost control. So we, I know we have to do it for licensing and things, but you can see how that's kind of, at least for me, it's, it's challenging when we have such a wide spread of numbers and, and then the $190 million relicensing is not a big thing, but it is, a million dollars is a million dollars. But thank you very much.
Just something there, Commissioner Brown, totally agree. It is hard to estimate these projects, particularly with the effect of inflation over the last handful of years. This project is one where we did go back and did some value engineering. The original engineer's estimate was $3 million. The value, we did value engineering and actually reduced the scope of the project in coordination with the Forest Service and settlement parties with a stake in the campground design and came back with, with that 950 some odd thousand. We were actually, and then they then got an updated engineer's estimate of 3.3 million for that, that new scope. So we were actually, it's still a lot of money, but we were quite pleased with the 1.7 million because it's significantly lower than the, the three-plus million for the engineer's estimate. We do continue to wash, watch costs. You'll see that in the presentation that we give later this evening. We'll talk a little bit about where some of that escalation is coming from. It's largely due to inflation and supply chain issues. But these are license requirements that we have deadlines to meet, so we are committed to achieving those in the most cost-effective way that we can.
Thank you. So I'll move to adopt item number five, consent calendar B. Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next item on the, then is the annual capital improvement plan assumptions and priorities. You have 35 minutes. Leave us at least 15 questions, please.
Think I can talk for 35 minutes about capital? Yes. I, I can't.
I know you.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners, everybody in outland. Tonight, I wanted to spend a little time going over the, the capital plan assumptions. It's, it's really a preparation for our July meeting where we'll get together and talk about the 10-year capital plan along with the long-term financial plan. So bottom, bottom line upfront, as they say, drafts, capital plans and long-term financial plans came in a little higher than, than we may have expected. So, so we've been looking at the capital plan and, and it's a very important part of the long-term financial plan discussion. I feel like this is so, for the record, my name's Rod Price and I would also like to start off by thanking Aaron Ballmer and his group, particularly Alicia Jorgez and Daniel Davidson. They were the finance people who were very sorry, I'm still getting used to this mic. They were very instrumental in helping us come up with some of these projections and numbers on it in a short order of time. Anyway, tonight, we're gonna cover some of the, the overview of how the capital plan works, where the board fits in. Some of the economic numbers that, that we typically talk about as goes into the capital plan assumptions. Investment priorities from the electric, water and shared services. Some of the challenges and risks that, that come up in the capital planning and then leave some space for, for commissioners. This is not a, we're not looking for action items here, but maybe a little guidance and feedback on how you see priorities and some of the assumptions we're gonna talk about. So for the customer who was testifying that they may have missed some of the capital planning, there's still more to come, so that, that's good news here. But it's, it's a process. And so we're at the beginning of the process here in the red box where, where we're gathering information such as guidance from the board around assumptions and, and the, the priorities around the investments we're making. We take that away, SAP does, and we, we mix it together with the long-term financial plan and come up with the best levels and optimize to, to rates and, and financial metrics and some of those things. And we bring it back to the board in July, in July, then there's details about both the plan and the, the rate trajectories and uh, there's details about both the plan and the, the rate trajectories and, and a number of things around the long term financial plan. And uh, that's for uh, the board to provide feedback and, and uh, look at. And then, of course, we bring final versions back in October and uh, so forth, so. Uh, timeframe, um, I just went through that. Um, so I want to start and talk a little bit about some of the terms and processes. I, I know some of this is review, uh, we've talked about these things before. Uh, just as a reminder, uh, the way staff typically talks about uh, projects and programs. Uh, we talk about them being compulsory uh, risk based and strategic, so compulsory uh, is the work you have to get done, that's like the obligation to serve, fixing things that have failed and so forth. Risk based is a little bit more uh, along the lines of projects that are uh, uh, time independent, still need to be done eventually. Um, they're flexible generally, um, they, they're set to address our strategic plan um, in, in different priorities like that. Uh, strategic are the big projects, the Carmen Smith, second sources, um, those kind of things. So the way we generally look at the plan and, and how we, we build the ten year plan with projects and programs is you start with the compulsory, um, and then you add the strategic, uh, and then there's a uh, a whole hopper, uh, Wally used to have a nice slide that showed all the there's more projects than we can do risk based than, than can get done. So we choose the right projects uh, to maximize our, our financial um, metrics and, and our projects and um, optimize the, the long term financial plan. The other thing that, that I guess I'll point out too is um, uh, some of the terms that we do use, and this comes from the board policy, is the type one, type two and type three. So once the programs and projects are, are budgeted and, and approved and in progress, then the, the categories are set up in type one, type two and type three for reporting purposes. So you'll find those uh, uh, in the quarterly report, um, broken down that way. Some of the um, assumptions, um basically, uh, this year, something that's different is, is the capital reserves. So each, each capital plan has an amount of reserves in it. Um, previously, uh, in water was eight million, now it's nine million. Uh, and previously in electric was twenty five, now it's twenty six. Basically just reflecting that the, the value of the assets, um, somebody mentioned inflation earlier. Um, the value of the assets has gone up, so there's a depreciation amounts relatively speaking to that. Um, speaking of inflation, um, we have uh, or we're sticking to our uh, previous years, uh, or we start anyway with previous years inflationary assumptions. Um, but we do recognize inflation's a big pressure. Uh, one of the charts we came up with here, if you uh, look at the, the chart there, uh, these are compounding inflationary rates for construction only, um, and so we assume um, some rates for our forward projections and, and construction. Um, the, the assumptions we've been using have been pretty successful. The, the orange line uh, is the actual inflationary rights that come from the, the construction box construction indexes. Those line up um, pretty well until twenty one, and in twenty two and twenty three, you can see that the two lines separate a little bit. So we undershot perhaps a little uh, for a couple of years, and uh, that comes back to impact some of the uh, things that I'll talk about later. But um, one of the things under consideration is how, how do we uh, input and calculate uh, inflation in our, in our long term financial plan? So that will probably uh, re um, revisited here in, in July when we come back. Uh, remember, I mentioned that we start with compulsory, we add uh, strategic projects, and then we add risk based projects. So how, how much, um, how do we know how many risk based projects we can add? Because we've got more than we can do. Um, so one of the ways we, we look at this uh, is that we use a, a ratio of uh, investments per uh, annual depreciation. And so for electric, uh, for instance, there's some pretty good industry benchmarks that, that have stood uh, the test of time that says if you invest about one and a half times to two times the the depreciation rate, then you'll keep ahead of, of the uh, reliability and, and financial goals. One of the things I wanted to point out, um, and just as a reminder, in twenty twenty one, we came to the board and talked about a number of things around resiliency, uh, aging infrastructure, um, strategic projects and that kind of thing. So uh, in that timeframe, we uh, proposed and, and the board approved and increased set of ratios. That means we could have put more projects in our ten year capital plan. And so uh, that's kind of reflected there in that, that chart to the right. You can see where, uh, for instance, the, on between twenty sixteen roughly and, and the twenty one budget, we were averaging a ratio of about one point eight. Um, and now uh, we're, we've added to we're about two point four on average. So um, the reason I'm, I'm talking about this a little bit though is, uh, we're still working on this in July, right? So I mentioned inflation is outpacing um, our expectations. So that ratio may, even if we keep that ratio, we may get less done than, than we, we could with the same amount of money, so. Some of the uh, priorities we have for investing in uh, in the electric is uh uh, current drivers, Leiber Canal, uh, dam safety, Walterville Trail Bridge. Um, we talked to the, the board several years ago about a cable replacement program. But number of substation projects, uh, distribution investments. Um, and um, as of recent years, we're, we're also replacing a lot more failed equipment, so. One of the things that we do to track the, the success of the investment or, or monitor, I guess, the, the amount of investment is, is the age of system metric. Uh, and again, you can find this in the quarterly report. The, the age of system is basically the accumulated depreciation divided by the plant and service. Uh, doesn't matter if you speak finances or whatever, but basically it gives you an idea of how financially old your system is. And so again, uh, electric has some, um, some pretty good uh, industry standards across the, the utility business that says if you stay below sixty percent, you can stay out of all your reliability and, and those are the targets that are good. The extra uh, investments we uh, brought to you in twenty one were designed to help bring the age of system down uh, to roughly fifty percent in twenty thirty. Uh, again, that was to, to uh, address aging infrastructure, stuff that's built in the forties and fifties, trying to get that replaced to make sure we stay reliable. In the water system, um, we don't have quite the same amount of, of standards to, and benchmarks for ages system, but um, the number of uh, forty three percent um is, is kind of where we're at with the water system, but it tells you and shows you the, the amount of investment. Uh, if you go back to the table that, that I first showed, the, the, the investment rates were higher. And so I think that's sort of a reflection of, of the that, that investment level. But uh, investment priorities are, are watershed. Uh, I wanted to throw that in there because that, that fee is um uh, ends in twenty twenty six. But uh, we've talked a lot about the base level water, uh, storage projects, College Hill, Hawkins, Santa Clara, uh, Sixtieth, of course, um, and then the, the interconnecting systems that, the pipes that it takes to create the backups and connections to those projects. Uh, strategic investment was, was the big uh, add in twenty one, which is the second source and the related transmission projects. Shared service investments, uh, AMI, advanced meters, um, uh, there's a typo there in the slide, I apologize. So we have uh, next year, uh, meters still installed upriver, uh, electric meters. Uh, and we will still have the water meters to finish up here in town uh, next year. Enterprise solutions, um, business systems, um, you know, it's combination of software and hardware and all the things that, that we need to do to run our business um, more effectively and efficiently. And, and uh, I think there's been a lot of information about that, but that continues. Uh, the other thing that um, more of a risk base, but it's the rock facility upgrades and, and also the, the work we're starting out here um, that just started, I think, this week on the, the, the corner of Roosevelt and Bertelson to help enhance our facilities here. This is a, a slide I kind of liked, and, and this is one Frank talks about the, the balloon squishing kind of thing, uh, which I'll explain in a minute, but um, the slide was in the background, or, and I thought I would put it in here to, uh, to show and explain it a little bit. So it's a series of, of capital plans over the years mapped out. Um, and so for instance, the, the plan that we brought and was approved in the board in twenty nineteen is the blue there from twenty twenty to uh, twenty thirty. So that shows you what we were projecting at the time in twenty nineteen. So if you jump all the way now to the, and again, the twenty twenty four, it's a draft, so it's not a finalized thing. But uh, what you see there is that the capital plan is much higher, it's the one in green than the blue. And it's also uh, loaded in the, the earlier year, so it's, it's got a shape like a hump. And so this is where Frank gets his balloon thing, you know, you squeeze the balloon and it pops up in, in a different area, same amount of air and scope. But um, part of the reason I talked about inflation, uh, that's one of the contributors here. Uh, another contributor is uh, Carmen Smith, which is the deadlines haven't changed to do the work, but we've not been able to do the work when we had hope to do it. And so it's pushing expenditures closer into these uh, coming years. And so as you can imagine, um, that has an impact on our, our long term financial planning. Uh, it also has impacts on our capacity to do things, you know, we uh, need to have people and, and finances to do those. Uh, and so that's just an illustration in the water. If uh, if you can see in the background, it has a very similar kind of thing going on where inflation has really driven up the price of, of some of the um, construction costs of the projects related to second source mostly. So I think one of the things that um, obviously there's a lot of risks here, um, we could talk about risks, um, but I uh, another thing Frank said that really caught my eye, I think, for here was the, the plans need flexibility. And, and I think the way we do our planning allows for flexibility. I, I think the other thing that really helps us is we have a very strong financial footing. We just got some bonds um, sold today, anyway, that's your thunder, not mine, but um, but we're, we're sitting in a really good financial place, and so it allows us to be able to flex and move projects. And so um, I think that the biggest concern, um, you know, is how do we, how do we get it all done with, with the money that we have? So I'm gonna stop there uh, for any questions and discussion, but any thoughts, uh, just a couple of thoughts there, uh, we can turn the risk dial, um, risk based dial to, to tweak things, but were there any uh priorities or uh, missing or added or comments on, on any of that, so?
Uh, we don't take any comments from the public after public comment. I'm sorry.
I can talk with you afterwards, if you want.
Yeah. Okay, uh, questions from the commission?
Sure, I'll ask. Um, I have a question, I mean, you're, you're asking us to turn the dial or lower priorities, I think they're all really important. Um, but my question is on cost inflation. Seems like everything costs more than we think it's going to cost, and we have a lot of big outstanding things that we're still working on and the things that we're planning for and trying to assess the cost. How do we get better at um, estimating how much things are actually gonna cost?
I, I think that's a great question, we've been asking the same thing. So um, again, I think what we're gonna do is, I think Aaron's online, but uh, what we've talked about is there's different methods to, to, to do that. Right now, we're doing kind of an average kind of thing, so um uh, really what we, uh, I should say that, what I should say is we're, we're following the Fed's guidance, right? Um, and so um, but there are ways to look at historical kind of things and do something different. So that's part of the information, you know, details that we'll bring back.
I'm jumping a little bit. Yeah, Commissioner Sloss, wow, that really got loud, sorry. Everybody's awake now. So I'm gonna reframe your question just a little bit, I think we have some uh right now, we, we manage about one point four billion dollars worth of, worth of assets, those are in different phases of their lifetime. And we have uh, at the same time, some pressures related to inflation, related to some of the other, the other things that, that Rod mentioned, and we're gonna have to navigate that. Um, and we're gonna have to work with the board around what the priorities and tensions are gonna be between rate pressures on one side and um, managing our assets and taking certain calculated risks on the other. Um, the, the good news relative to how we handle inflation is we have noticed over the last several years, especially because we deal with assets that have really high um, raw material content, for example, we, we deal with very big things, it costs a lot to ship them, it costs a lot to to uh, do certain construction projects, and that has outpaced even just standard inflationary numbers. So as part of that navigation, uh, we're gonna have to take a look at where we have flex points, uh, quite honestly, where we can take calculated risk, move things in and out uh, in their timeframes uh, in order to be able to meet the financial obligations uh, that we've set forth in policy, but also the uh, to be able to navigate the impacts on rates and our customers. Um, the, the amount of scope per dollar that invests, that we invest has gone down because of the ability, because of what you're talking about. And we're just gonna have to be able to, to come back to the board with what that flexibility looks like. Um, I think we're gonna have to forecast going forward over the next ten years a, a forward looking age of system based on different levels of investment in order to be able to create the flexibility, I think you're, you're looking for uh, so that we can make conscious choices with this plan. Um, as it, now, the good news is we do have certain flex points. Um, the bad news is we're seeing a lot of pressures that are, that are forcing, forcing us to use those flex points.
Thank you, and then, you know, I know my time is up, but also just the regulatory pressures that we're facing. It seems like a lot of our costs are driven up by that, and I don't know that we have a crystal ball or something that can tell us what um, what regulations or what, what changes are coming, but it does seem that that, that's, it definitely impacts it.
Yeah, I agree, the, the regulatory environment is, is not getting easier to navigate. It's, it's becoming uh, more restrictive and more challenging. It doesn't necessarily um, mean that um I mean, that when, when you look at regulatory compliance, that's, that is in our compulsory uh, classification of, of projects, that's not something that we would typically flex. In the long term, we're gonna have to decide what our business model looks like and what kind of resources that we want to, to have as an organization that are very heavily involved in, from the regulatory side. So that's, that's a bit of a longer term decision, uh, but it does impact the ten year capital plan. Go ahead. Great.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, thank you. So um, just for purpose of education, the, the cost of weatherization and things of that are not in this capital consideration, this is just the infrastructure. So how many substations did we lose during the ice storm seven? Did we go offline?
A little bit significantly more than that. We, I don't
I mean, anyhow, we, we put it all in yeah, around the seventies, and now that's fifty years ago, and now they all need to be replaced. It's like replacing your light bulbs, you do it all once, you do it all once again. So we're faced with that, is that not correct? And so we can't run any of those to failure.
Well, I, substations are a little different, so um, but the, the idea is um, they have individual components in them that, that we are um, trying to be effective in not just replacing the whole thing, but components of them that are aging, so.
Um, my priorities for capital investments are reliability and affordability. Equal, and so whatever it takes for you to achieve that, because affordability thing is coming up and liability is because we can put a lot more dependence on the electric grid, so you're the experts, figure it out, those are, but, but not pro comments on that, so I don't wanna get into any talk.
Commissioner Brown, you, you did pick two items that are in constant tension with each other. Um, now, the, the one thing that I, I will um agree with you on is if you look at the history of Eugene, a substantial amount of infrastructure was built in the sixties and seventies when Agree with you on is if you look at the history of Eugene, a substantial amount of infrastructure was built in the sixties and seventies when when Eugene was growing at a very rapid pace. And all of that infrastructure is aging at the same time. Now, what we've, what we're working on is not to replace that all at once, but how do we navigate your comments around affordability? Using what Rod described, which is to look at the different components and the risks of replacing different components within that infrastructure. In a way that doesn't put the pressures on rates that that may be replacing all of them simultaneously would, I think. Our electric manager Tyler Nice describes this as the sort of the pig in a python, or the, I don't remember exactly how he described it, but it's. It is a lump of investment that we're facing that we're gonna have to create some flexibility, and quite honestly, take a look at where we can take risk and where we can't.
I think another just quick answer to that, we also have some reliability components that we know, and so you kind of go after the the the. Highest offenders, if you will, and so. In the oldest stuff, so so there is a plan out there that that steps through, so you can, hopefully, we can see that when you get a little more details from Tyler in the in the. Presentation you'll get next year, or next year, next month, whenever it is, sorry, I need sleep.
All right, we've got Matt in the queue, Matt?
Yeah, thanks, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you, first, I want to say actually John Brown does have a crystal ball, and I'm actually a little frustrated he doesn't bring up the meetings to help us with all of this stuff. But beyond that, first, thank you for the presentation, Rod. And the the materials, I this, I I think of all the things that we're doing, this makes me maybe the most anxious, and there are a couple of like individual projects that make me anxious too, but. The pressure here. And, you know, inflationary pressures in particular, and and remaining high interest rates just makes me uncomfortable. I do feel like as a board, we've done all kinds of things, and and passports have taken all kinds of steps to. Really be prudent about spending funds and reducing risk and providing cushion, you know, Frank just spoke to that, and I feel like this board has. Opted to, you know, pre-fund Lieberg, more like, I feel like we're doing all the things we can to give ourselves as much cushion as we can, but. These changes are certainly a little bit concerning, my question for Frank and Rod. Are there additional steps that we should be considering that would give us a little more cushion at this point, or do we just need to start? As Frank said, kind of leaning on those levers that we do have available to us, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's good, a good question, what additional steps are there, so with everything, there's there's risk, as as Frank was pointing out, so. Deb and Aaron, and we've been talking about this in finance, there's there's tugs and pulls, there's debt ratios, there's different metrics, and there's different funding sources, you can bond fund versus. A rate fund, and so what we're gonna do is is come back with the information we have, and we get tonight on in July, with some of those more details of. So you'll get to hear. Information about the capital plan and the resulting. Risks and trade offs you might get in the capital plan versus the the rate trajectory or. Metrics or or whatever.
I I would add to that, that you, while I can't claim to have favorite meetings throughout the year, probably the discussions around the long term financial plan are amongst my favorites. It it really does get down to the the trade offs between. How we want to manage project of projects over the next decade, what risks do we want to take, and what does that mean from a financial and a rates perspective? And there will be more steps and and more ideas that we bring forward next month for the board's consideration. We want to understand where we, we want you to understand where we see trade offs, and and we want to get from you your thoughts on where you could see trade offs as well, but that's. That that's the the question at hand is exactly the one that Commissioner McCray mentioned, which is what else can we be doing? To deal with the the tensions between our values here around affordability and and maintaining our reliability, which is the other part of of the investment in infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
A couple of questions, and then I'll comment on on the questions at hand. I'm I'm curious, so on page 17, we were talking about the age of system. And curious, so if our target for electric is 60%, and you said that it's the division of. How much, how old? The projects are versus the.
It's the accumulated depreciation.
Accumulated depreciation, it's a very new project, and we have much fewer accumulated depreciation. So if we just installed two giant water tanks at Fort Worth and Patterson. Is that enough to sway that metric, and so that's why it's well under the 60, it's like at 43% for the water side? Is that one of the factors?
Water's been, it's not exactly apples to apples, but water's been running at the 40, 50% for a long time, and I think it's really. We look at the size of projects that have been done versus the size of the capital assets, and I'm sorry, the assets and the capital work we do. They can chew into it, it just has a lower thing.
Do they last less amount of time than our electricity projects?
No.
Okay, so part of the reason that I, you know, when I look at that, and like, are we, are we over investing in it, like, if if a main target is 60%? Are we over investing? And it's it it's hard to make to know, because I know that we've done some of these major projects, so seeing that skew shift, it's not necessarily a good indicator, but I don't know how big of a portion that is. There's also the other side of it, that it says that we don't have a, we don't have a set target. For that particular one, and I don't know, it kind of alluded that there isn't an industry standard for the water side. I don't really understand why there isn't. But again, if if we're trying to pick a measurement that kind of roughly, you know, over time, tells us that we're making the right level of investment, which. It it seems to me that we are, we kind of weren't for a long time, and this is why we have this. Pig in the snake that was suggested, so now we're at this place where it's like, well, now we can't really not do anything about it, we have to. Eat this mound, and so that's even gonna go down further, is that correct, is that's my.
But I've, go ahead. What I would say is consider the water and electric systems differently. So the standards and benchmarks, one has their own, and the other one has their own, and. So it's it's the relative amounts and the changes that that are that are important, but. The water system, for instance, the 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 increase in spending started, gosh, back before I left, in terms of getting like Hayden Bridge, and that's. A lot of money that was invested in the system, so that helped drive that price that that down. Relative to, and again, electric, so you can do a $5 million project, and it has just that much less because of the size of the asset is, what, 750 million versus 250 million, so. But I I wouldn't get too wrapped up in this, these are rules of thumb, these are things we use for for guidance, and you can, they're not standalone either, so hopefully, we're we're looking at all the metrics. Network values, and you know, there's lots of things to look at that you can consider, those are financial perspectives, there's also reliability statistics, KPIs, breaks per mile. A lot of those things that that also play into it, so that we are targeting, you know, some extra investment, because our. Our brakes from leaks per mile, no, sorry, brakes per mile, I can't read the AWA, but it's something like that, and so that's driving the investment in pipes, because some of the type ones are, so.
Well, obviously, I mean, the 40th and Patterson project, we had to to do that, so we could take college hall up, fine, so that was not really an option to not do it, we had to go for it. Okay, so then in terms of the. You know, deprioritization of some of these projects, I mean. It's very hard for me to, I mean, we've, we're already down the path of all of these projects too, so saying, let's, you know, pause on this, although I am curious, EES versus CS versus communications. I I kind of personally lump all of those into the same thing, maybe that's incorrect on my part, but I don't know how the communications varies from the. CS side of it. Yep, so I mean, maybe there's an opportunity.
I think those are just examples, I think what we try and do is is get the the feel of priorities from strategic plan, so there's the resilience, so if we're trying to. Address resiliency in the the water system, and and that's the the big driver right now, is is all the work that's going on in the water system. The the big ticket work, for instance, so. I think those are just examples, and so when you get more of the details from Wally and or the Mike and and Karen and. And Tyler, next, next, next month, that it'll be a little easier to sort through, so I'm just trying to prime the pump a little bit here to get you thinking about. Different projects, and then, it's also.
Priming the pump, and like, I mean, if there are projects to you that don't keep you up at night, and don't think that there are, you know, a a big priority now. Just let us know.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, I mean, I just feel like we're so invested in all these, it's not.
The trade off, the trade off is probably the affordability piece, and so that's that kind of conversation we can have, that here's here's the the balance.
And then I think about, you know, if we had put in the secondary water treatment plant six years ago, we wouldn't have had this either, so you know, the longer we put off some of these projects, the affordability aspect starts to eat us on the other end of it. Okay, that's it, thank you.
I'll just add something, yeah, Commissioner Carlson, actually, what you said at the very last sentence, there was really appropriate, when we, when we think about trade offs, we're not just thinking about the the risk profile that we're dealing with. Relative to reliability, for example, but also the impact of delays on the overall cost, so you you can push out a project, you can, you can take out the lumpiness in your investment. And in the meantime, ultimately, you're gonna pay more for it on the on the outside, so some of those conversations, we will. Take a deeper dive into next month. Relative to age of system, you you brought up age of system, I do, I do think it's important to recognize the difference between an industry standard and then a benchmark, and where those are developed. The the electric side, APPA and and other organizations have a number of different industry standards and benchmarks to work from. It's different a little bit from the water side from two perspectives, one, those those assets are depreciated at separate rates than on the electric side, those are. You know, and even within certain classes, those are depreciated differently. And also the lumpiness of the projects there, and and certainly the projects that are large, like the the drinking water storage projects, those will have a direct impact. A noticeable impact on the age of system, so you're correct in both in both accounts. But as we go through this, I think one of the things that that we want to bring back is based on different levels of investment. And different kinds of projects, what does that do to our age of system? And potentially even some of the things that we know might be a more immediate threat to reliability, which would move those into more of a compulsory role instead of a risk based role.
Thank you. So I had a couple of comments and questions, first comment was. On the chart that shows the the balloon, don't really like the fact that it corresponds exactly with my elected tenure. 24 to 28 is the the peak, I'd known that six months ago, I may have made a different decision. I do like the fact that a previous board made the. Decision to jump the the metrics to two and a half and and four and a half, as far as investing this, and I understand that. Because of the inflationary pressures and some of the other things, that we're gonna get less bang for a buck even at the two and a half. You know, if it was up to me, I would bump that up to three and a half, but then that gets to our rate, and and so that's gonna be the hardest balance for me going forward. And I don't know if this really, really. Falls into the. CIP and the long term financial plan. But I would like to know where where on the dials we can turn them when we see big cost overruns. You know, when I see a Carmen Smith cost overrun of 3 million, 4 million, $5 million, or some of these other things. That will have a direct impact on rates, because we're just sucking it up and paying for it either out of reserves or wherever. Are there risk based things that we can turn the dial on to help us, or having a list of those risk based things that we can go to? And say, you know, if we push this out, yeah, it's gonna cost us more in the long run, but we can live with that right now, to to have the the rate pressure less. And I'll give you an example of that, back in the day when I was on the Eugene's Budget Committee, they were going through a bunch of problems, right? And one of the things they said, you know, they replaced their their fleet at seven years, okay, and so it was like, okay, well, if we push that to eight years, that saves us this many million dollars. It it may mean that there's more repairs on that truck, or that a truck might be out of service more, but if we have some of those types of. Dials that you, we can turn, and I don't know at what point we'd get to turn those. Whether it's in the budget process, whether it's in the long term financial plan or in the CIP. But you know, when I see an overrun in a. In a consent calendar, and I know that that's gonna have a direct impact on rates coming up. Being able to know from staff what a reasonable dial to turn to help us with that upward rate pressure would be helpful.
Yes, we have a both water and electric have capital processes that that look at this stuff pretty much all year round. And so I've had conversations with both Wally and Tyler in in finance, and you know, the lump, how do you smooth out the lump, right, well, there's ways to do that, and that's what that risk based category is for. And it. It doesn't, you know, and that that's where if it comes at a cost of scope, to, you know, Sony wants to see all these things done. But it comes at the the expense of of rates, then then we have some different ways to to look at that, but it. That that's all part of the fun, right?
It's very and very enjoyable. Commissioner, I I think you bring up a a couple of points relative to how and where we turn the dials, and. Some of that, whether a dial is even turnable, has to do with the driver of the project, if it's a safety based project, if it's a a piece of equipment that fails. Not so eloquently, you know, if it blows up versus if it just quits quits working, if it's driven by a compliance obligation, the these are things that. We generally won't turn the dial on relative to affordability, if it's simply a matter of of timing, it's a matter of the scope per cost. If there's things that we can manage based on the timing of the investment, so there's a reasonable amount of risk to push something in or pull it out. Those are where we will generally have the most opportunity to turn the dials. Part of the discussion with the board occurs around the long term financial plan, which kind of sets the boundaries of the overall, which is one point where the board can weigh in. And then there's the budgeting process, which is which is another one. And then the third one, as we go through the year, when we when we have, sometimes you'll see a consent item that says. When you know, we budgeted X amount, it's actually gonna cost us Y amount, we're gonna manage within the budget, that means that we're gonna turn those dials around risk based projects to do that.
Great, thank you, other comments from the board? Thank you for the presentation, look forward to seeing. The integrated with the long term financial plan in the coming months.
I think next month's meeting will be a very important one for commissioners.
Okay, it looks like we are on schedule, and we are scheduled for a 10 minute break, but I'm gonna say let's go 8:15, we'll be back. Thank you. So I'm going to call the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda item is uh item number 10, Carmen Smith update. Lisa, Mark and Candy will be giving us a presentation. We have forty five minutes. He was least twenty.
All right, we'll try. We do have a lot of information to cover, but we'll talk quickly. Um, good evening, commissioners and guests. I'm Lisa Kearns, Generation Manager. Joining me tonight is Patty Boyle, our generation, or excuse me, our Carmen Smith Licensed Deployment Supervisor and Mark Synaker, our Generation Engineering Supervisor. We are here to provide an update on the deployment of the Carmen Smith Hydroelectric Project Operating License. Now, a lot has happened since we last spoke to you in September. So this evening, uh, we are going to provide uh background, a regulatory update, project status, and discuss the M safety factors and budget. Now, you saw this slide in September, but the history is relevant. So as a reminder, the history of our current FERC license goes back to nineteen ninety nine when relicensing began. A final license application was submitted in two thousand and six, following years of studies and discussion with stakeholders, including regulatory agencies. The existing license expired in two thousand and eight, and that was the same year that the original settlement agreement was filed. After that, license issuance was held up for many years due to a discrepancy in the Wild and Scenic River designation, which was essentially a jurisdictional issue between the FERC and the US Forest Service and not something within EWEB's control. During that time, however, power markets changed dramatically to the point that EWEB requested to renegotiate some specific terms to of the settlement agreement to address the economic issues. An amended and restated settlement agreement was filed in November of two thousand and sixteen. That included a revised upstream and downstream fish passage. So rather than building a volitional fish ladder for upstream passage and a floating fish screen for downstream passage, the settlement of parties agreed to a trap and haul facility, modifications to the spillway for downstream passage and permanently shutting down the Trail Bridge Powerhouse. The current forty year license was issued in May of two thousand and nineteen. Shown here is a list of the parties that signed on to the amended and restated settlement agreement. Of note, several of the parties from the two thousand and eight settlement agreement declined uh to sign on to the two thousand and six agreement, uh namely several non governmental organizations, one of whom is here tonight, Cascadia Wildlands, American Whitewater, Oregon Wild and the Oregon Hunters Association. Now, FERC licenses and settlement agreements by their nature are intended to balance the social, environmental and economic costs and benefits of a hydroelectric project. Since the license was issued in two thousand and nineteen, several notable things have occurred. I won't go into each in detail, but I wanted to provide a timeline of the most recent events. First, in April of two thousand and twenty, EWEB presented a plan and schedule for construction of permanent fish passage to the Fish Working Group, which is made up of federal and state agencies, tribes and NDA NGOs that are parties to the settlement agreement. That schedule showed completion of fish passage in two thousand and twenty five, which was several years beyond the license required deadline of May, two thousand and twenty two. Now, we'll discuss the drivers for that later, but it is important to note that the three year uh deadline that was um anticipated in the settlement agreement was optimistic from the start and has become increasingly complicated since. Now, concerned about that delay, National Marine Fisheries Service, US Fish and Wildlife Service, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality filed a notice to cure and initiated dispute resolution under the uh terms of the settlement agreement. In October of two thousand and twenty, the FERC, per a license order, required EWEB to work with the fish agencies uh on a deadline and advancing fish passage as soon as reasonably feasible. Then, to make things even more complicated, in May of two thousand and twenty one, sinkholes were discovered in Trail Bridge reservoir, which directly impacted the design and eventual construction of permanent fish passage at the base of Trail Bridge Dam and ultimately lengthened the schedule by many years. In October of that year, Octo uh EWEB began formal discussions uh on actions that we could take to mitigate for the impact of the delay in fish passage on aquatic species. And in January of two thousand and twenty two, just a few months later, EWEB agreed in principle to all the actions that had been identified to date by the disputing parties. Then in March and April of twenty two, the National Marine Fisheries Service and US Fish and Wildlife Service requested additional mitigation actions that required further design and analysis. And I'll discuss the details of those mitigation actions in a few slides. Now, as the board is aware, in October of two thousand and twenty three, so just last year, both the National Marine Fisheries Service and US Fish and Wildlife Service filed letters of non compliance with FERC that included allegations that EWEB had intentionally delayed license required projects and acted in bad faith. EWEB filed a comprehensive uh response to FERC in November, which you've all seen. And at the request of the federal fishes fish agencies, also convened the Settlement Agreement Policy Committee, which is essentially a procedural step to allow parties to withdraw from the settlement agreement. In December, National Marine Fisheries Service did just that by filing their notice of withdrawal from the settlement agreement agreement and requesting that FERC, as the Federal Action Agency, reinitiate Endangered Species Act consultation for upper Willamette Spring Chinook salmon. In January, US Fish and Wildlife Service followed suit by also withdrawing from the settlement agreement and requesting ESA consultation for bull trout. And in April, a FERC issued an order to EWEB responding to numerous EWEB filings, extension of time requests and general project status. In that order, FERC granted several extension of time requests that were outstanding and required that EWEB file responses to for three specific projects. Our planned submissions for those are currently under review by the Fish Working Group and will be submitted to FERC in the next month or so. FERC also stated that EWEB is out of compliance with several license articles, including permanent upstream and downstream fish passage and Smith bypass reach habitat. Notably, FERC did not address the request from National Marine Fisheries Service and US Fish and Wildlife Service to reinit reinitiate Endangered Species Act consultation. And then finally, just last week, four non governmental organizations, Cascadia Wildlands, Oregon Wild, American Whitewater and Willamette Riverkeeper filed a letter with FERC in response to their April order, noting many of the same concerns as the fall letter from the federal fish agencies. Now, I want to be clear, we understand and absolutely share the concerns of uh about fish passage delay. We also find that the letters um by the federal fish agencies and the NGOs are simplified with respect to the complexity of the dam safety issues and the current causes for delay. And we are going to talk about those in a little bit more detail. Important to note that regardless of the letter submitted and the uncertainty of how FERC is the Federal Action Agency will respond, all license requirements remain in effect and EWEB continues to work as quickly as possible to meet those requirements. The resource agencies have a responsibility to administer the Endangered Species Act and the Clean Water Act. And because the fish passage projects are significantly delayed, the agencies have requested actions to mitigate uh the impact of those delays. Those actions include funding for uh phase four, the Deer Creek Aquatic Habitat Restoration Project. EWEB did fund that. That was completed in two thousand and twenty two. Um, we also constructed and operate a temporary trap and haul facility at the Carmen Smith spawning channel, which is just downstream of Trail Bridge Dam. That was completed in two thousand and twenty three and will continue to operate until permanent fish passage is constructed. Another request was to contribute to a fund for future habitat projects and provide downstream passage through the existing spillway and immediately uh shut down the Trail Bridge Powerhouse. Now, this uh last one is a little more complicated because we need the Trail Bridge Powerhouse to be able to operate to safely pass river flows through the dam when the spillway is closed for construction of downstream uh fish passage via the spillway. However, we're currently conducting a low load study uh to determine if the plant can reliably operate at very low loads to enable increased spill for downstream fish passage until permanent uh fish passage can be compl uh completed. The preliminary results of that study are very promising and we feel hopeful of a positive outcome for that. And then finally, the agencies requested that we incorporate stage zero habitat restoration principles into the design and habitat enhancements in the Smith bypass reach and increase flows beyond what is currently required by the settlement agreement. We have completed fifty percent design for that project. We're working on the ninety percent per design and we presented a full proposal, including flows to the agencies a week ago that they're currently considering. So I wanted to talk a bit about project delays and the drivers for that. The graph on the left shows the projects that we're tracking in two thousand and twenty four. This is not all licensed projects, it's just those that require work this year, but it serves as an example of where things are at. Projects are divided into small, medium and large projects for the for the purpose of this uh conversation. Small projects are those that tend to be uh less complex, whereas medium and large projects are typically highly complex, multi year whereas medium and large projects are typically highly complex, multi-year, and costly, but also have the greatest and most significant environmental benefit once they're completed. As you can see, we're on track for a majority of the projects, but we are behind on several medium and large projects. These are projects like permanent fish passage and flow release structures. Not surprisingly, these are also the projects that are most impacted by the dam safety concerns and issues, which leads me to the graph on the right, which are reasons for delay. Now, there are certainly things that EWEB can do better, and we continue to seek input from agencies, from FERC, from consultants, and others on how we can improve. And we're implementing a number of ideas to that end. That said, dam safety is the primary driver for the current delay, and Mark will talk a little bit more about why that is a little later on. All right, just one more note on this. One thing to note is that we track projects in compliance according to FERC deadlines, which are separated out. So for example, design and construction for the same project will have multiple deadlines and requirements from FERC. So they'll show up as two or more projects in the graph, even though they're related to the same outcome. Finally, I promise this is my last slide before I pass it on to Patty for more uplifting news. Shown here is our master plan, so you aren't intended to be able to read all of this. What I wanted to show was to highlight the sheer number of simultaneous projects that we're working on at Carmen Smith. There's a lot going on and a lot of overlapping construction projects, and you can see each line is a separate project, most of them large, complex projects, and includes design, permitting, construction, and closeout. So these do take a long time to complete. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the immense effort that all the Generation Division staff, as well as environmental staff, and many other partners throughout the utility are putting into to accomplish all this work. I know we're behind on projects, but we're also putting in a tremendous amount of effort, and there's a lot of folks highly dedicated to getting this work done. So I wanted to acknowledge that and thank them. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Patty to talk about two thousand and twenty-four construction.
Thanks, Lisa. I do get the benefit of sharing what I think is some pretty exciting news about projects underway in two thousand and twenty-four. The project photos on the screen were taken just last week, and this is where we're staging logs, boulders, and treetops that will be assembled and placed in both deep and shallow water locations in the Trailbridge reservoir and in the Smith reservoir for the benefit of all aquatic species. The particularly exciting piece of this comes in the Trailbridge reservoir, where we are really supportive of the Chinook habitat and the bull trout habitat. Both of these projects have been extensively reviewed by FERC dam safety, as well as the resource agencies within our Fish Working Group, and I think that everyone's pretty excited to have these projects completed in two thousand and twenty-four. Go ahead and give me my next slide. In addition to the reservoir habitat, we will also be completing the final phase of improvements to the spawning channel. This project rendering gives a sense of the log and tree structures, along with the gravel and boulder additions that will go into the spawning channel just in the next few weeks. These materials are intended to break up the flow of the water and add complexity to both flow and habitat, primarily for the benefit of Chinook salmon, but will benefit all our multiple species there at the spawning channel. Bull trout also use the spawning channel and will benefit from all of these improvements. With my next slide. Then also, in addition to the habitat projects, we are rebuilding two recreation areas. These were noted earlier in the board meetings. You approved that construction contract. Thank you very much. And pictured in this slide is the shoreline where the lakes and campground is, behind those trees. What we will do is rebuild that entire campground, including picnic tables, fire rings, new restrooms, and those storage for hand-launched craft. The little design rendering shows an example of what one of the campsite configurations will look like. That's a little bit of a trickier project because all of the materials must be barged in for construction, and it will take place after the habitat is installed in the Smith reservoir. Then, let's see, we've got also the second of the two recreation projects will take place at the Smith day use area. That area will also get new picnic sites, fishing facilities, a shoreline trail, and we will rebuild the boat ramp there at that facility. Both of those recreations are anticipated to reopen in two thousand and twenty-six. Then, I just wanted to note that we have a growing list of completed projects. Some of these you've seen before, and I'd just like to highlight that our first completed project for two thousand and twenty-four is the wildlife habitat improvements on the transmission line. You may remember that we began that project last year, and needed to shut down the project due to wildfires. We were able to return to the project early this year and complete it after reassessing the need for additional snags along the transmission line, given the impact. That project was completed just in late April, a few weeks ahead of its May deadline. So with that, I believe that's the end of my slides. We'll turn the presentation over to Mark, who has some information on our power plant improvements and the complexity of the dam safety issue.
Yeah, thank you, Patty. So, power generation improvements. We are nearing completion of the power generation improvements at Carmen Smith. We will be starting the last unit overhaul later this summer. And it's been a long road. Two thousand and sixteen is when we formed the first power generation improvement with an overhaul of the gantry crane, shown here, doing its max load capacity test. Next slide. And it got its first heavy lift in two thousand and seventeen with the delivery of two new turbine shut-off valves for the Carmen plant. Those were completed and installed in two thousand and eighteen. And then we moved on to the rebuild of the Carmen substation, which sits on the roof of the Carmen power plant. All that old equipment was removed. The roof deck was reconstructed, new generator step-up transformers, breakers on the roof, switchgear, and relays within the power plant, all completed in two thousand and nineteen. And then, the most recent, or the next project that was completed was at the Trailbridge Power Plant. Electrical and controls improvements completed in two thousand and twenty-three. That's the nineteen sixty-three vintage electromechanical controls that were replaced with modern relay systems, new switchgear, make that plant ready to support the necessary fish passage construction, which had been planned for the next year. And we'll get into some of the reasons why that didn't happen as planned. At the Carmen plant, so the first unit overhaul, that one started in two thousand and twenty-one, was happening in parallel with a lot of the other work I described. On the left, you can see the new coils being installed around the stator core. On the right, you can see the refurbished rotor, one of the heaviest lifts completed by the gantry crane. And the next slide shows the new turbine components. Wicket gates on the left, the new turbine runner itself on the right, started spinning and commercially operating in April of this year. And as Patty alluded to, I also wanted to touch on the major complications that we've experienced associated with emergent and other dam safety issues. So in two thousand and eighteen, that's when the Carmen sinkhole discovery occurred. On the right, you can see a bathymetric survey from two thousand and sixteen compared to two thousand and eighteen. This is where we realized that these were not test pits relic from construction, but rather active sinkholes. That complicated a relatively straightforward flow release structure that Patty's team had planned, delayed it, and expanded the scope to include spillway works as well. Next slide. Seismic discoveries. In two thousand and twenty, improved imaging, LiDAR imaging, revealed that the White Branch Fault Zone did not stop at the Bellnap Hot Springs, rather it extended north, all the way beyond Clear Lake, in close proximity to the Carmen project, shifting our understanding of the seismic hazard. It's not the Cascadia, the major Cascadia event, but rather it's a local, close-proximity fault zone that is controlling our seismicity. Next slide. And then, of course, at Trailbridge, May of two thousand and twenty-one, it was the discovery of sinkholes in the Trailbridge reservoir, triggering extensive investigations so that we could understand how those sinkholes would interact with the planned fish passage improvements, the spillway, and at the trap and haul facility. Needed to fully understand that relationship in order to properly design and construct and add mitigation measures to those projects as required by the sinkholes. Next slide. So each of those emergent dam safety issues has resulted in a lot of studies. And just a couple of examples here, they're not small efforts. The Trailbridge Sinkhole Study on left, three hundred and eighty-eight pages. The Seismic Hazard Assessment on the right, three hundred and twenty-four pages. These are substantial documents that get reviewed by the Portland Regional Office. They also go to FERC Subject Matter Experts in D.C. There's back and forth. If you can read the fine print on the right, that Seismic Hazard Assessment's on revision two. Each of these FERC's review processes result in comments that need to be addressed before they are ready to be approved, so that we can proceed with the next steps on design and implementation. Results in increased cost, and as you know, results in prolonged schedules to coordinate mitigation of these dam safety issues with the planned fish passage work.
Great, thank you, Mark. And I thought of something while you were talking, Mark, around the powerhouse improvement. So we were able to begin them prior to license issuance in two thousand and nineteen because they weren't. So the other components of the license were predicated on having a license to do that work. So that's why the powerhouse work was able to begin prior to license issuance. All right, so I'm going to talk a bit about economic changes. As you're aware, this comes up almost every board meeting, the budget projections for the project have changed significantly since the initial two thousand and sixteen project estimate of a hundred and thirty-nine million. Our current estimate puts completion of all the required projects in the Licensed Settlement Agreement at a hundred and ninety-four million. That does also include powerhouse upgrades. So I wanted to provide some example of what is driving that escalation. So overall, schedule delays have not been our friend. They have made us susceptible to inflation and supply chain issues. And then there's dam safety concerns, both known and emergent, that have expanded the scope of many projects. And then additionally, there have been unanticipated costs related to mitigation for delays in fish passage. For example, construction of the temporary trap and haul facility at the spawning channel was not originally anticipated to be needed. So I wanted to go through just a couple of examples to give you some idea of where those escalations and how they're occurring across the board with respect to those three separate items. So I'll start with the Carmen load bank. So this is a project that is not, the cost escalations are not driven by dam safety, and they're not driven by regulatory changes. The original estimate in two thousand and nineteen for this project was eight point one million dollars. The current estimate is seventeen million dollars. So this project is really supply chain and massive inflation as the major drivers for the increased costs. Smith flow release structure is a different story. So this is a project that is heavily influenced by dam safety concerns and issues. The estimate for this project in two thousand and seventeen was a one million dollars. The current estimate is sixteen million. And that is, again, driven by dam safety because we needed to modify the design significantly to accommodate for the probable maximum flood. Inflation is also a factor, as it is in any project that we're implementing these days, but dam safety is a primary driver. And then finally, as another example, the Carmen diversion flow release structure. This is an example that Mark already talked about, but in two thousand and seventeen, the estimate for this project was one point seven million. Dam safety issues required a complete redesign and new spillway rehabilitation that brings the project up to four point, five point four million when you add also in the increases due to inflation. Those are just some examples. Additional information on budget and project value, overall project value, will be presented in the fall following our annual Integrated Resource Plan update. So that's all I was going to cover on budget tonight, but we will be back in a few months with more detail and a broader discussion.
Right at twenty minutes.
Right at twenty minutes. All right, yeah.
I have Commissioner Paulson to the queue.
Okay, I have a number of questions, so I'm going to try to just rapid-fire them. One, just looking at the timeline, so we started this whole project back in nineteen fifty-eight. Fifty-year license, did we have trap and haul or any sort of fish passageway during that entire time?
No, there was no fish passage at the project.
Okay, so we've had fifty years where there's no fish passage that was not required. So then we get to two thousand, or nineteen ninety-nine, we start relicensing. We get through that process, which takes almost ten years, until the license expires, and we get this license issuance delay because it's now designated a Wild and Scenic River designation. So now they're saying, okay, now this designation, you need fish passage. Is that correct?
No, so just a couple of clarifications there. So studies, as is typical, relicensing is a multi-year process, and you start with studies and other investigations to determine what you should do as part of a relicensing. So that's what started in nineteen ninety-nine. The final license application was submitted in two thousand and six. Specific settlement negotiations were from two thousand and six to two thousand and eight. After that time, so there was a discrepancy in the way the Wild and Scenic River was mapped. So that's what caused the delay, is the time, that delay between two thousand and eight and two thousand and fifteen. I'm sorry, what?
Who makes that determination, that mapping?
It's the Forest Service.
Of course.
Yeah, so it's still-
They're the ones that made a mistake that then caused this designation to screw up our licensing plan. I just want to get it clear.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so then we go through this whole process in good faith. Many of these people sign on, these organizations sign on. We go through this whole process, and then we get down to twenty twenty, which, you know, obviously many things are going on. And this is where we're asked to put in fish passage, additional fish passage. Is that correct?
No, so the revised and restated settlement agreement that was signed in two thousand and seventeen, submitted in two thousand and seventeen, included a temporary trap and haul and downstream passage via the spillway. The previous settlement agreement also included fish passage. It was a volitional fish ladder for upstream passage and a floating fish green for downstream passage.
Have we had temporary fish passage? And since when have we had temporary fish passage?
Since, so since two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and twenty-three last year, we built a pretty extensive temporary trap and haul facility that's located at the spawning channel. That's been operating since last year, will continue to operate until permanent fish passage is complete. Prior to that, we did contract out with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to manually move bull trout from the base of Trailbridge Dam to over Trailbridge Dam.
Okay, so we did trap and haul. We were moving fish prior to-
Hook and haul, yeah.
Okay.
Angle and haul.
Okay, and how many fish did we get during that time? Any rough sense?
I can't, I don't know.
I mean, we're talking like hundreds, five, I mean, rough scale. Any ideas?
For bull trout, so bull trout have been the fish that have been manually moved for a longer period of time. I don't recall how many, but we can get back to you with that number. We did operate the temporary trap and haul in the spawning channel last year. It was complicated because the project needed to be evacuated for the lookout fire. And so we were only able to operate that facility for eight days, I think, and didn't get any fish. However, our team has been working with ODFW and the fish agencies to make any modifications to that trap that they thought was necessary in order to improve its efficiency this year.
So we had, we had some trap and haul of some kind. We were moving fish, even though fish hadn't even existed in this whole space for, I mean, fifty years. They'd been blocked. I mean, this was from decades ago. Are these kind of fish, like trout, in that they return to the place that they spawn at?
Yeah, so the two listed species we have are upper Willamette, spring Chinook salmon. They are an anadromous fish species. They do have historic, they were historically above Trailbridge Dam before the project was built. Bull trout are a migratory species, so they move in and out within the watershed. They have, and they do have a population upstream of Trailbridge Dam half the whole time that the project has been in place, but have been disconnected from other populations downstream of the dam.
So why do you think that they, all of a sudden, last few years- So why do you think that they all of a sudden, last few years, after all this time, decided that now we need to do this?
Oh, for fish passage? It's, it's, so it's, it's very typical. And I would say it's, it's an assumed requirement of any relicensing proceeding where fish passage is theoretically feasible.
So maybe we could say that they got new information that maybe caused them to change their mind and ask different things of us? That may be a fair assessment?
Well, in the fifties, when most of these dams were put in place, fish passage was just not something that was routinely installed. Times have changed. More information around fish populations, dynamics have been gained. So fish passage is, is generally a requirement at hydroelectric facilities, if it's technically feasible.
How many are really being impacted by this particular project? And I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I have a few more questions. It seems to me that they got new information and they asked new things, which is the same thing that we've done. We got new information that we had dam safety issue and we brought it to their attention and they said, hey, we need to pay attention to that. It seems very similar to me that that's what happened with this fish, fish passage issue and that we've been trying to work through many barriers, including these other ones, to deal with it. And it's both shocking to me and odd at the same time that we would get these weird letters when we've been working with them throughout this entire process and people and organizations that originally signed on to these same plans with that similar information have like turned a complete blind eye in these last recent years to all of these other things that have gone on that have caused delays. So it's, it's just my observation, but I think it's very odd. I'm going to turn one, one other side here. We've done a lot of work on the downstream portion of the river. We're going to remove Leiberg. Does that have an impact on the fish?
Yeah.
Does it make it up to the dam that's actually above here?
It, the removal of Leiberg will presumably benefit Chinook more than bull trout, but there will be a broad benefit for all aquatic species.
Oh, and did they know any of that in the works that we've done to mitigate? I'm just curious because it seems like we should get at least some credit for that pathway that we're going down. Also, we, I know that in response to the fires, we've done a lot of work around our watershed protection. And that should help the fish as well. Does any of that count in this process?
Is that a rhetorical question?
Yeah, you want to, just, okay. Well, I'll let others talk. Thank you.
Fisher Row. Thank you. I've got a lot of questions. So just a macro question. So the, the feds get a free pass on this because lookout Dexter, there was a much greater run on the Willamette than there's no fish ladder, there's no, no passage and no way to even accommodate it with trappin hall or anything. Do they get a pass, a free pass? Cause they've relicensed it several times, ACOE.
Well, the Corps of Engineers is not subject to a FERC license, so very different profit.
Hundred and ninety-four million are our rates, the five-year projection based on that hundred and ninety-four million?
I'm looking at Deborah, but we've been including updated numbers in the long-term financial plan.
So our, our rate projection that we have where our rates are going to go up include a hundred and ninety-four million dollars debt service for.
Hundred and ninety-four million was in the plan of last July.
Just shy of that.
So most of that was captured and then we have a new, we have newer numbers that will be included in July.
Okay. And the hundred and ninety-four million assumes what fish?
It assumes the current requirements in the license, which is trappin hall.
Okay. And when I was on the board, when we were talking about the fish ladder, the engineers couldn't figure out how it would work because on the, on the far side, opposite highways where it was going to come over and the drop was too much and then, and they were going to compromise the integrity of, of the, they, they couldn't figure out engineering how to do it. They were just bottled and, and anything changed? Because they said it would be the longest passage of anything in the Northwest and they didn't know if the fish would ever use it. But they were more worried about dam safety, about when they, when they had to dig into the mountain wall to have the fish ladder come there because of the fluctuation of, of that. They said it would be a fourteen-foot drop and kill the fish.
Yeah, that, that was why that fish ladder was so expensive is it was an engineering challenge. There was a solution to it, but it was a expensive solution. And it also has, it's also exposed to the same dam safety challenges.
They were going to compromise the integrity of, of the mountain and so that was it. And so the last question I have is the habitat we're doing in Trail Bridge.
In the reservoir proper?
Yeah, we were the, the.
We're doing a lot of habit. So all the reservoirs and the reaches have an.
Do any sinkhole mitigation, will that negate the habitat? Structure that we're putting in. And so if we put in all this wood and all these rocks, and then we have to go in and do the construction project to mitigate sinkholes, will all that cost be mitigated or, or just negated?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that in a roundabout way, but it'll get to your point. So you, you raise a really good point in that habitat, both in-stream and in-reservoir habitat, when contemplated under the original or the revised and restated settlement agreement and the original license, was not considered to be a dam safety concern. However, it's not just related to sinkholes, but also just the general change in understanding around dam safety vulnerabilities has caused all of the habitat projects to be subject to dam safety review. With respect to the reservoir habitats, you know, we dam safety, the Portland Regional Office and I think DC had to sign off on, on that. We, we do need to build a much beefier debris boom to accommodate for concerns around wood that's placed as habitat being mobilized and ending up on the dam. Mark, did anything else? Did it, did that answer your question, Commissioner?
My last one is, so we built a fish ladder, we had to build a downstream, a filter, basically a trap. And that was totally untested technology and they didn't know if it would work. And it was like forty or fifty million bucks and they had no idea it was going to be a floating and they were going to trap the fish. And it was pretty Star Wars type of thing, you know, that nobody knew even how to design it, let alone construct it. Is that still the case? If we build a fish ladder, we, I know we stopped generation to, to offset the downstream damage to the small, but if we, if we continue to not generate a trail bridge, we put in a fish ladder, do we still have to put in that screen? That forty or fifty million dollar screen?
So that's an unknown. So the fish ladder and downstream screen were designed as kind of a pair. Presumably if we were to, to investigate a fish ladder, we would be starting from scratch. Not only because the original design is quite old, but we have a lot of new emergent dam safety issues that were never considered when that design was prepared. So how that relates to downstream fish passage, I can't, can't say.
Looks good. Thank you, my time's up.
So I just have a like bigger question. Is when do we really talk about Carmen Smith? I mean, I think about the, all the things that we've heard of tonight. We talked about our improvement plan and how much costs and where can we turn the dials and things like that. And then we've seen that this is like, what, like sixty million dollars over budget? Environmentally problematic and we've got risks of fires now. We have low water years. Like when do we have this higher level discussion about what do we want to keep throwing money at this project? I mean, I don't know what our options are. I know that we're committed to locally generating power, but how many more sinkholes will come up or I, I just think, and we talk about what our, our portfolio is going to look like. Anyway, I just wonder, when do we talk about Carmen in the bigger picture?
So I think we're going to start that discussion in the fall and I am looking at Frank to see if he wants to chime in. But, but that was one of the thoughts for this, for the fall in conjunction with the integrated resource plan is to have a broader value discussion.
Yeah, Lisa's correct. I think looking at the, the business model for the electric utilities specifically, presently we're completely vertically integrated on the electric side. And so having that assessment and analysis and talk about the trade-offs between having and owning and operating our own generation as part of that will be, will be part of that discussion. That, that does, that said, that does not remove our obligation under the license that we presently have. So but having that higher level discussion should inform a number of directional decisions around resources.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I, I really liked the way you laid it out with the timeline and everything. Very clear.
I would also just, just add that another piece of that relative to that business model decision informs the product selection that we decide and directly decide to go with the Bonneville contract.
Matt, you are in the queue.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Oh, I can't.
All right. You hear me now? Great. Thank you. Thanks to staff for his presentation and the, the materials, the briefing materials provided beforehand. It's all really helpful. I have a couple of clarifying questions. Sonia, I hear your frustration about this feels like a, a challenging situation, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sense of it myself. And I'm wondering, Lisa, if you can point to the trigger or triggers that required this, like started the requirement for fish passage. You mentioned something about the Forest Service. But how does it relate to our our relicensing and how does it relate to the Endangered Species Act? Cause I think there's a few things at play there. And I, I know we could probably spend a lot of time. I'm not, I, I don't need to drag us into the weeds. I'm just trying to understand kind of the trigger that started this and like, and the timeline especially of like when, when that trigger was pulled.
Yeah. So it is, it is complicated. So the, the Forest Service and Wild and Scenic River issue that we were talking about is unrelated to fish passage. When the, the project was originally built in the fifties, there wasn't the mandatory prescriptive authorities held, that are currently held by the federal fish agencies, National Marine Fisheries Service and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service under the Federal Power Act and Section eighteen fishway prescriptions. So that, Commissioner McCray is really the trigger for a fish, fish passage requirement and the federal agency's authority to require that. Unrelated to the Forest Service.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And, and we started the relicensing process in like two thousand and eight or twenty-ten and, and started talking about fish passage at that time, correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Could you say that again?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We started the relicensing process in like two thousand and eight or two thousand and ten and, and started the conversation about fish passage at that time. Is that right?
We started the original conversation about fish passage in the early two thousands in preparation for the final license application and ultimately the two thousand and eight settlement agreement. Then began renegotiation of the fish passage methods in two thousand and fifteen for a renegotiated settlement agreement that was submitted in two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. Thanks. I guess for me, I've been following the FERC docket and the, that April letter from FERC is concerning to me. The language, the rhetoric, you know, it seems like it keeps getting heightened each time we hear from the federal agency. And this one feels like FERC is, is saying, hey, you know, you guys have to take some action here. And, and they're pretty plain about that. I'm curious what our plan is to change course to meet the requirements that FERC and the federal fish agencies are putting in front of us. Given that it's very difficult, we have seismic issues, you know, all the challenges we have in front of us. I'm curious what our plan is to change course so that we're in compliance with FERC's requirements.
Yeah, it's a really good question and unfortunately another complicated one. You know, again, we, we are committed to looking at things we can do differently or better. The reality is the review times that for both dam safety and others are just prohibitive of expediting the schedule beyond what we currently have anticipated. And I'm, I'm looking at Mark and Patty to see if you have any adders. So essentially, just in a nutshell, we're doing what we can, but there is not a feasible way to construct fish passage next year, next week, or even in two years. We have very significant and concerning dam safety and regulatory review processes that we have to go through and cannot sideline. Anything you want to add to that, Mark?
I agree a hundred percent with Lisa and just would contribute that what we are doing with the, the remaining license requirements is advancing those as quickly and as expeditiously as possible, including all the habitat projects that are going in this year and next year.
Yeah, that's a good point, Patty. So yeah, we are advancing what we can, even if that means, you know, being, you know, ahead of license dates, requirement dates, because it's a project that we actually do have the latitude to move on. Mark?
Yeah, I was just going to add that our, our, all of our work in, and on that like Trail Bridge Power Plant, as an example, was in anticipation of implementing the downstream fish passage improvements the next year. We were urgently wrapping that project up so that we could go into construction. And it was that discovery of sinkholes the, the year prior that FERC was clear that that sinkhole risk needed to be understood before we could advance the design and implement the work as had been planned prior discovery of sinkholes.
And I, I do appreciate the work that we're doing on, on the fronts where we do have flexibility and the mitigation activities we're taking. But what I'm, what I read, I think in the memo there was that FERC's not recognizing that as meeting our obligations, or maybe it's the fish agencies that aren't recognizing that work as meeting our obligations for this license. I guess I see, I, I, I think the fish agencies and FERC understand the pickle we're in. And yet they're laying, at least what I read is a letter to us saying, hey, you know, you gotta do something. And so I, you know, I, I don't expect, I guess, a perfect resolution tonight, but I, I will be curious to hear what our plan is to make sure that we're not in a spot where we're getting sideways with FERC and, and exposed to greater, you know, potential financial penalties or, or the like. My last question would be around the fish passage that we, or the, you said hook and, hook and haul, I think is what you call it, Lisa. That's not meeting FERC's or the fish agencies' requests here for fish passage, right? I mean, something we're doing on the side, but it's not meeting what they're asking for. Is that right?
So the angle and haul, definitely not. That is not a good long-term solution. The temporary trappin hall facility that we have built in the Carmen Smith spawning channel is better, but it is not as effective as what is to be planned for permanent fish passage. But it is what, it's this, the place that's available to us and, and we did get buy-off from all the, the fish agencies on the design and operation of that facility. And Patty had something down. Oh yeah. And downstream fish passage, correct, through the spillway. So we are doing what we can currently to maximize spill through the spillway to allow for downstream fish passage to the extent possible. We hope with the preliminary results of the low-load study that that will be increasing even further in the, in the near term.
So can you clarify for me? You said we got buy-off from the fish agencies on fish passage that you just mentioned, but it's, was it buy-off in the design, but we haven't built it? Is, is the pickle we're in at this point?
No. So the temporary trappin hall facility, totally different facility than the permanent trappin hall facility that's intended to go at the, the base of Trail Bridge Dam. The temporary trappin hall facility was really designed and construction to, constructed to mitigate for the fact that we cannot build permanent fish passage at Trail Bridge. So totally different project. And the, the, the fish agencies and others. So totally different project and the, the, the fish agencies and others reviewed and approved the design and the construction and operation of that as a temporary mitigation measure.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate you fielding all the questions from all over and I appreciate the team's effort on this. Yeah, on this project, it's a, it's a tricky one. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So I have a couple of comments and then a question or two. Going to a little bit of what Sonia said, you know, but I, part of my duties on this is I sit on the Mackenzie Watershed Council. And we have done a lot of, of things to take care of the fish in, in our watershed, helping fund it that. So I think our commitment to, at least what I've seen, our commitment to the, the recovery of the run is genuine. I think that, that can be said. So a couple of the questions that I have is, you know, the bar has been moving on us, you know, with the new seismic things. And the, the PMF, what is the, what is our maximum flood that we have to build this to now? I know when we talked about, when we talked about Lieberg, it was a one in a million year flood. Are we having to build these booms to what, what level is the PMF?
Yeah, it's the same probable maximum flood, extremely low probability, but high consequence.
One in a million is approximately.
One in 10,000, one in a million, that order of magnitude, correct?
Those are the types of curveballs that have been thrown at us in, in some of these regulatory programs. Second, on the, on the downward spill that we're doing now, are there fish, are there smalls up above that are actually coming down? Are we planting those or where, where are those coming from?
So since we have a trap, temporary trap and hall facility at the spawning channel, the idea is hopefully there'll be a lot of fish in that trap. They will be moved above Trailbridge Dam. That would be primarily Chinook, perhaps bull trout. But bull trout are also, again, I think I mentioned that there is a population of bull trout above Trailbridge Dam in Sweetwater Creek. And so this connects them to their ability to go back and forth.
Okay. And then now I'm gonna dovetail on what the concerns that Matt had. And I guess for me, some of my concerns are, yes, the agencies that have said they're pulling out of the settlement and want us to change course, convince FERC of that. Sounds to me like the options that the, the agencies are looking for is a fish ladder that they can swim off or taking the dam out. Those are the two things that I heard from, from some of the people. And those are, I think, what the best case scenarios that these two agencies would like to see happen. If FERC says we have to do that, what is our path forward?
That's a good question and probably more of a legal one than I would be prepared to answer at this point.
Okay. And I'm looking at that as not so much of a legal, as more of a financial. Because as we've seen with, with FERC mandates, you know, FERC mandated we, we fix the canal. And it was a $200 million mandate. If FERC set mandates that we do either a fish ladder or take the dam out or face these fines for not being non-compliant. Do we as a board at some point have a, an idea of what that financially would take that 194 million to?
Yeah, we don't have a, an idea of the, what the cost of a fish ladder would be at this point. Again, we can't just go back to the conceptual design of the fish ladder that was construct, or that was designed after, partially designed after the 2008 settlement agreement. So it would be a total wag, something we would have to consider and do, you know, an analysis on.
And then the last question I'll have is, at what timeframe do we anticipate seeing some sort of a decision on that type of thing from FERC? Do we have any idea when they're gonna rule on the requests that have been made by the fisheries?
We do not. And for, for folks in the room, just a reminder that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC is the federal action agency, so they are the entity that would act on that request from the federal fish agencies. We do not know. The order that they issued in April mentioned that the request for reinitiation had occurred, but did not provide any insight into what they plan to do with it.
Thank you. Sonia for a second round.
That's great. I have a few more questions. So on the, the risks and the delays, I noticed that there weren't fires located there. We've had a number of fires, I think, pretty much every year, for at least the last four years, we've had a fire up there too, correct?
That's correct. It is, you know, there are a number of risks that weren't on there because we were trying to just, you know, not overwhelm. But we have science constraint issues. We certainly have wildfire issues that have impacted the project many years in a row, most notably last year when we had to fully evacuate the project.
Listen, I'm still unclear, so I just wanna reiterate this. So if, I think we're still waiting on FERC to say, yes, you can do anything. Is that correct? Or are we past some of the dam safety issues? Cause my understanding was that you're still waiting on them to say, you can do the thing that you need to do to fix this.
So with respect, specifically respect to fish passage, I think, is that your question?
Yeah, yeah. Fish passage, because that's what we're getting these letters on. And it's bringing everyone out of the woodwork to pile on that, damn you EWEB, you haven't done what you should do. And it feels to me like FERC is saying, hey, you have an issue. We didn't know about this before. It came up recently. We're working on it with them in good faith and have continued to do so. And now they're saying, hey, what the hell have you been up to all the last four years? You know, aside from, I don't know, COVID and other things that we've had going on that were also outside of our control. I just want to know, we are still working with FERC and we can't do anything until this is fixed, right? The dam safety issues.
Yeah, and you, so and a, a point to clarify here is FERC is their multi-entity organization as well. They have a Division of Hydro Power and Compliance and they have a Division of Dam Safety, both with separate missions essentially, right? We work very closely with the Division of Dam Safety. That is where we have our, our primary points of contact and trying to work through the dam safety issues. The department, the Division of Hydro Power and Compliance or DHAQ, they're still tasked with administering the license requirements. And so, and there is this absolute conflict between dam safety requirements and our license requirements. And so FERC in and of itself are a bit at odds with each other.
Sure. And, you know, they're a federal agency that is massive. I mean, we issued the application and it took three years for them to approve it. So I don't expect that to move any quicker just because a bunch of people piled on some letter that, you know, and should we as a board take it seriously? Absolutely. But I think that's what we're doing here tonight is kind of pulling apart and unweaving this onion and getting to the center of what is going on. And so, you know, there's another claim that, that cost is an, an issue. And yes, it might be, but again, that's not the delaying factor.
No, in fact, the delays have cost a tremendous amount of money. So, so any assertion that EWEB has delayed to save money is just inaccurate, not factual.
Okay. And then, sorry, one last question and then I swear I will rest. The, the fish, when I look at the, the map of where this is, I think I'm remembering this correctly, but right at the base where Trailbridge is located, isn't the Haley Falls just right up the hill from that? Or is that down below? I'm trying to remember where that is. It's just up the hill. So there's like these massive waterfalls, just a short bit further from where the, the offshoot is that we're trying to bring these fish into. Is that correct? Where would the fish go to spawn past that? It's not like they're gonna jump up the waterfall that's, I don't know, 50 to 100 feet? You don't have to answer that. I just think it's bizarre. And thank you for clarifying where the, where the space is.
So Tamalich Falls, also known as Blue Pool, is a natural barrier to fish passage, has been for a long time. Fish passage at Trailbridge Dam would open up on the order of six miles, is that right? Four to six miles of, of habitat. Yeah, that's not currently accessible.
That habitat is found predominantly in the bypass reaches and just above Trailbridge reservoir. So there is habitat up there.
Okay, so it's not, I was thinking that Trailbridge was just right at the base and then it was, so.
There's, there's expanded spawning habitat.
Commissioners for a second round?
Just a real quick confirmation that Chinook on the Mackenzie are not in danger?
Currently, yeah.
Bull trout are vicious and they eat the salmon smolts.
I think bull trout like salmon. Yeah.
I mean, cause they're not, they're not bug eaters. They're, they're.
As with any ecosystem, fish eat other fish and, but yeah, Chinook salmon are a food source. Chinook fry, smolts are a food source for bull trout.
Fish passage. But I just wanna keep it all in context too, because I think safety is, this is important, is preserving the runs, you know, environmental. But I just wanted to make sure that they're threatened and not in danger. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Matt, did you have anything else? Sounds like no.
Yeah, nothing else for me. Thank you, John.
Thank you. I guess the last thing that I would like to say is just, for me personally, as a commissioner, I am passionate about maintaining the watershed as a healthy part of our, of our ecosystem and doing whatever we can as a utility to help bolster that ecosystem. But there's only so far that I think we can go as, as a publicly owned utility. And I think we have done a lot of good work and I hope we continue to do a lot of good work on the Mackenzie, at the watershed, to, to restore habitat and bring back our threatened species. Whether or not Trailbridge and Carmen Smith are the, the thing that will do that, I'm not sure at this point, but I am committed to doing whatever we can to help maintain our ecosystem on the Mackenzie. And Upper Willamette. That, we will move on. Thank you for the presentation. We are going to move to river meeting follow-up.
I suppose, Commissioners, just to introduce the subject. This year, the Mackenzie River Port Meeting was resurrected as an open house appreciation dinner. We changed the format significantly from the, the prior years. Staff has gone through, I would term a, a post-event hot wash. We've, we've gathered a number of different suggestions for improvement going forward. Should the board like to stay with that type of format? I did, and just in introducing the subject, I wanted to thank staff for all the organization of it. Adam Spencer, who was the emcee, president of the Mackenzie Valley. And I think that we all thought did a, a great job of introducing the meeting, setting the context. So I wanted to, to thank him as well. So we've kind of gathered our input and have, have a number of different suggestions, but this time was really allocated to get Commissioner feedback on the format, since it was a change, whether you'd like to continue it and if you had suggestions for improvement, if so, going forward. Well, it was somewhat fresh in our minds, so. Vice President Borowski, I'll turn it back to you. We'd just like to gather input from the board as to how we can improve going forward.
Good. Mindy? I thought it went really well. In general, I thought I was supportive of the format. I was skeptical. I thought it was a bit ambitious when I saw the list of topics that we were all supposed to discuss. But I think it worked really well. I appreciated getting to talk with people one-on-one in a way that I couldn't at, to some of our regular meetings. It was nice to be able to sit down with them and listen to what people had to say. I'm not sure how Upper River feel about the meeting, if it made a difference to them or not. But from my standpoint, I felt like I was able to connect with more people, to be, listen to what they had to say. And overall, it just felt much more respectful.
First, I'd like to thank Mindy because you're the, you're, in my opinion, the impetus to change the format, to do it differently. And I would thank you very much because I thought it was one of the meetings, Upper River meetings I've ever attended that I hope we don't deviate from. I think we could do it a bit better. You know, I found out my popularity, I had one advertisement on cable, forced half. It was kind of a nice thing that my ears weren't ringing. I was really, it was a nice discussion with people. So it would have been nice to maybe had to interact with the more people that definitely said, you know, I didn't want. Other than that, I, I thought it was a 9.99 success. So thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'd just echo, appreciate the change in format, really appreciate Adam's introduction and kind of carrying the thread for the whole evening. I thought he did a great job with that. I don't have any big changes to suggest. I think likewise felt like it was a way better format, more effective. I feel like residents felt heard more than they have in the past, so all around. I think a better outcome and I really appreciate the effort that went into organizing that. I also appreciated the security there. I felt like, I, I, yeah, I felt like we, the, the crew was really taking care of all the details and really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, for me, I, I agree. I think it was, it was done very well. One comment that I would make going forward for next year is, a lot of the questions that got asked of me, I could answer because I had three years on the board. And, and in some of the answers, I know that we're gonna be having a new commissioner on board next year and it might be only a month or two in. So making sure that one, either he is, is brought up to speed as much as he can or is supported by staff as much as he could. Cause a lot of the questions that were asked of me, I wouldn't have been able to answer in that first year. So that's just something going forward, I think, that would be helpful if you're, if you're looking at that. When we have a new board member, I don't want him to be, you know, there's already a fire hose effect that you get when you join this board. And then to have a fire hose effect and perhaps sitting at a table with somebody who's peppering them with questions that he can't answer may not shine the best light on, on the organization. But other than that, I was really happy with it. I think it went well.
One other comment. So I sat at the table with folks who were concerned about Lieberg Dam. So people who had feelings about things and it was really great to hear what they had to say. And I was with Frank and also Jeremy Simoji, who are really great at being able to communicate. But something that I did notice was really a difference in the way the, at EWEB kind of responded to some of their questions and concerns. And so I don't know how to share that kind of feedback, but especially going forward as you talk about the transportation plan and all of that. I just noticed some opportunities for us to communicate better with people. So maybe on our check-ins, I'll share some of that with you.
Yes. Yeah, Commissioners, just a couple of the feedback that, that we went through. First of all, Yeah, commissioners, just a couple of the feedback that, that we went through. First of all, the room was pretty noisy. And if you were at a double table, the, the distance created some challenges with the communications. And we're going to look at if there's some different configurations going forward. Also, just the information tables weren't quite identified very well. So really kind of trying to differentiate where you could get certain information that, where we had technical experts in the room, just identifying those a little bit more clearly. And then finding a way to connect some of those dots that Commissioner Borowski mentioned. Because, you know, when you're in a room, you might have a planned question or two, but those aren't the ones that you get asked. You get asked a broad range of questions, everything from, from tree trimming to fish habitat to transportation issues. And so having at least access to the proper resources within the, the room and how those could be followed up on was another area that we're looking at. So we have a, a number of different things that we're looking at as well. But it sounds like commissioners appreciated the format. It definitely facilitated more people to have interaction with staff and commissioners as opposed to just a, a conversation that was dominated by a single topic. And so if, if that was the objective, I think we achieved it. Sounds like commissioners are supportive of a similar format next year, maybe with some continuous improvement thrown in.
Just one thing, don't throw an ice storm in it next year, okay?
I'll, I'll speak with the people I know to try to prevent that.
Okay. Any other comments on Upper River? All right. Next thing is future board agendas.
Just one comment about the future board agendas. We, we do have a meeting that's scheduled for July 2nd. I just wanted to confirm with the board whether the 2nd is still the date that you want or whether we want to push that from the 2nd to the 9th. We just, we need to be able to plan around one or the other.
I won't be here on the 7th. Will not be able to call it.
That could be a fishing day for somebody. They can still be here, but. I, I, if you want to move it, I mean, it's, it's whatever everybody else, I can be here the 2nd or the 9th.
Kind of have an issue on the 9th. My wife is getting hip surgery on the 8th. If I did it, I would be doing it from home.
I, I have family coming in the previous, on the 2nd, but if I can also make the 9th work, I just wouldn't run the El Cog executive.
Matt, do you have any issues, one way or the other?
I'm checking right now. 9th works on my end.
Okay. Let's move it to the 9th. I'm, I'll be a maybe. Haven't missed one yet, but I'll be a maybe.
Oh, maybe a dial-in.
Dial-in at best.
Okay.
Dial-in at best and, and maybe not even at all.
I'll just do a quick consultation with Ann and Holly. 9th works okay from our end? After creating all this discussion, I just want to make sure.
It may not happen.
All right. We'll make it the, we'll move it to the 9th. Thank you. That was all I had on future agendas. I am looking for a specific time to address the commissioners having a comment around the, the business model. So on the electric side. So I'm looking for a time to do that that's associated with some of the other things that, that we're looking at around resources.
All right. Last is board wrap-up.
It's just one thing about six months ago, we terminated a contract for about a million bucks up to Mackenzie to kill trees along the corridor because of the fire. And you were going to get, someone's going to get back to me about what we did with that, you know, that, to meet that requirement. Because I think it was $900,000 was the, was the contract. And we, we took it out of the consent calendar because we said that enough trees have died from the fire. Maybe why kill critically thick ones? And I just wondered if you could get back to me on what happened with me, that requirement? Did we meet it by, by counting dead trees from the fire or whatever? We, we were going to girdle and pop them.
We can answer that, right?
Yeah. Oh.
So after the fire, we pulled the, that effort off the table for last year. We did go back and reassess what was needed to complete our regulatory compliance. We completed that in late April of this year. We'll watch and work with the force over the next several years to see how things come back to trust if we need additional snags over into the future. So we are definitely in monitor mode right now. So our compliance is good, so we're monitoring.
I, I just wanted to say that I appreciated you giving me some extra time to talk about the Carmen Smith piece and ask some extra questions because it's something that's very near and dear to me, watershed protection. You know, how we move with this and how we're seen as an environmental organization. Because I think we do a lot of really wonderful work here. And when I hear some of those things, it riles me up. So anyway, I just thank you for your leeway there.
Matt, anything?
I, I would just say thank you, Borowski, for chairing the meeting today and, and to the rest of the team for facilitating my remote participation. I've had some extra help from Ann and Holly and really appreciate it.
Yeah, just one thing I want to pass it to Deborah Hart, who has some updates on our favorable participation in bond markets.
So this morning, we did price bonds for the electric utility. Last week, the market did take an upturn, which is not good for us. And we didn't know it was going to be crowded. However, over the weekend and Monday, things calmed down a bit. And even with a crowded market, we took offers, we took orders of $665 million, so 10 and a half times what we had available to sell. So it was a very popular product and we're able to shave basis points off and bring our all-in total interest cost to 4.29. That is not the best rate that the electric utility has seen. But last year in a different market for a different utility, the water utility came in at 4.13. So we feel pretty good about where that landed. And then when we look at how we compare to the MMD, a yield curve that we look at, we had the tightest spreads, which is good, that on our longer-term bonds that EWEB's seen in 10 years. So all in all, given the conditions of the market, we feel really good at where, where we ended up. Versus, and we do budget, we do plan for 5%. So that was a good showing for us.
Thank you. One thing that I would like to maybe throw out there, having been the first time facilitating the meeting, you know, we start the timer when we have questions, they give us three minutes. And we ask a question and staff takes up two minutes and 45 seconds of that. At other meetings that I've been at, when we ask a question, if staff is responding, they've stopped that clock. I don't know if that's something we want to look at in the future, but it's just something that it feels like we put added pressure on ourselves to get what we want both to staff and from staff when we're looking at a clock that's blinking at us when staff took up the majority of that three minutes. So I don't know if that's something we want to bring forward in the future, you know, time when we're talking about procedures or whatever. But I just noticed it tonight as, as being the chair. And I just wanted to throw that out there. So with that, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.
Think so.